Debbie Marie, could you move my second profile over, please?
Okay, YouTube has launched. All right, we've got all the council members.
What more could you ask for?
Maybe a glass of wine, I don't know.
Yeah, that's true.
After I mute, are we allowed to do that during council meetings? I could, you know, I thought that could go very badly.
Well, you know what happened to that planning commission? You know, watch out for cats and dogs, too.
In this house, we small, we throw small children.
All right.
Okay, about a minute out.
All right, T minus one minute.
Twenty seconds. Okay, here we go. In five, four, three, two, one, we're live.
Good evening, and welcome to this, the May 11th meeting of Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting to order. This is going to be a virtual meeting conducted both on Zoom and YouTube. We'll be taking public comment both from YouTube and through emails. So please ask the city clerk to conduct roll call.
Councilmember Carling.
I'm here.
Councilmember Coomer.
Here.
Councilmember Monroe.
Here.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Here.
Mayor Marshon.
I'm here. Since the, we have multiple platforms and because of feedback and delay, I will be conducting the, I'll be reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'll ask that you please rise and join me as we recite Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you very much. And there we are, back, back live. Okay, so we will now have the citizens forum, the city council can either deliberate nor take action on an item brought during citizen forum. We will have these read into the record, the city council has received these. But we will read the, these comments into the record. The, bring this over to the city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. City clerk's office, please read comments received via email.
These are 500 words.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Honorable Mayor. The first letter, it says, "To be read during citizens forum, from Bill Dunlop, Chair Citizens for Livermore Central Park. In the interest of finding common ground and beginning, excuse me, bringing the community together, the Citizens for Livermore Central Park, CLCP, sponsors of the Central Park Plan Initiative, have been meeting with city leaders for the past six months to bridge the differences in their plans. The discussions, many conducted by a professional mediator, have been private. They have, however, reached a point of progress where CLCP can state publicly that we support the following downtown plan and actions. One, hotel location. CLCP supports a hotel that is sited on the east side of Livermore Avenue. Two, hotel height. CLCP supports a destination hotel that rises up to four stories. Three, Stockman's Park and surrounding development. CLCP supports Stockman's Park and the developments surrounding it between Livermore Avenue and the K Street Extension as shown in the city plan. Four, location of Veterans Way and parking south of it. CLCP supports the current alignment of Veterans Way and the parking south of it. Five, commitment not to file a lawsuit. CLCP agrees not to proceed with the lawsuit against the city of Livermore for violating voters' constitutional rights that protect initiatives. Six, withdrawal of the Central Park Initiative Plan. CLCP will withdraw the Livermore Central Park Initiative that is scheduled to be on the November 2020 ballot. We are optimistic that city leaders will be open to these concepts as the downtown revitalization unfolds. One, paid parking facility off Livermore Avenue funded by private investors. Participation of the east side hotel developer and others in discussion of a parking structure under the hotel or on a site nearby would be encouraged. The hotel's need for valet parking could be eliminated. Two, return of the hotel to the high-quality Marriott Autograph brand or one similar. A destination hotel enlarged up to four stories will enhance wineries, businesses, and cultural amenities, and with its higher room rates, bring more hotel taxes to the city's general fund. Three, residential developers' consideration of relocating its housing to a nearby location. Some or all of the 130, three and four-story affordable housing units shown in the city's downtown plan could be moved to properties north of Railroad Avenue, between L Street and Livermore Avenue, an area already zoned residential. A study of this site shows the 130 units in the city plan could be accommodated along with another 100 to 200. A higher number of units with their proximity to downtown center and public trans- transportation, transit, excuse me, could make the relocation attractive to the city's affordable housing developer. A larger active park would then be possible for visitors and residents to enjoy in the heart of the city. We believe that the goals of both parties will be achieved. As a result, we are committing not to file a lawsuit against the city and to withdraw our Central Park Initiative. That concludes the 500-word count portion. The entire document is available in the public record. I have another one. This one is from Thomas Soules, S-O-U-L-E-S. The most important thing the city and the Chamber of Commerce can do right now is try to help the small businesses of Livermore. Unless we, the city, the Chamber of Commerce, and the people of Livermore, help the small businesses, even after the pandemic, Livermore will not be the vibrant city it was a month or two ago. These businesses, they add so much to the life of the city and provide employment to both their owners and employees, have been decimated by COVID-19. Many function on a day-to-day or week-by-week basis, and if not already looking how, looking at how to shut down permanently, will go under very shortly as a result of the lockdown. I understand that the city is allowing businesses to delay public utility bills and is taking other measures to ease some of the immediate financial burdens that these businesses have and that people are ordering food for takeout or delivery, buying gift cards and other things. However, we must do more, we must, excuse me, much more, or these businesses will have no revenue stream, will go under very soon. As one way to help, I ask the city or the Chamber of Commerce to set up a charitable fund to help provide a lifeline for these very small businesses of Livermore. This charitable foundation account might be called Help Livermore Small Businesses Survive COVID-19. Private and public donations would be made to this account that would be tax deductible. The money would then grant funds to one, of $1,000 to $5,000 apiece that would go to provide lifelines for these small businesses. I, and I think many like-minded people would happily donate money to this fund to keep these businesses in business and support their owners and employees in this time of crisis. The fund would target the very small businesses in Livermore that add so much to the vitality of the city. These businesses are so small, they could probably not compete for federal loans being offered and would be too late anyway. To advertise these grants, we might send cards to the businesses. The business would have to be, one, nonessential businesses impacted by the COVID-19 lockdown. Two, businesses that saw a drop in revenue of at least 70%. Three, businesses that have a two to 10, have two to 10 employees. And four, businesses that could state briefly in a sentence or two why a grant of this size would be important to them or at least help them pay bills during this period. The type of businesses would not be important, restaurants, nail salons, barber shops, small manufacturing, dance studios, gift shops, et cetera. The grants would be issued immediately as soon as funds were available, and they would be given without strings attached. Perhaps the Chamber of Congress could prioritize the grants. The city of Pleasanton is doing something similar with a $3 million loan fund. However, Pleasanton is offering short-term loans, not grants of a similar size. That concludes the 500-word portion of this submittal, and the entire document is available on the public record. And there's one more. This is from Eric and Davina Bonifacio. Dear Mayor Marshon and City Council, I hope you are all safe and well. My name is Eric Bonifacio, my wife Davina Bonifacio, and I have owned Livermore Martial Arts Academy for 13 years. We have helped hundreds of children and adults through the years to gain valuable self-defense and life skills through the discipline of martial arts. I believe that our service is essential to the mental, social, and emotional well-being of our students and community. Our business has been shut down since the shelter in place on March 16th, and as a result, we have suffered a significant loss of income to our family and employees. We have not received any help from our landlord either, who is still requiring us to pay our monthly lease. Our primary concern is that our business will not survive if we don't open our doors again soon. Since some restrictions for small businesses have started to be lifted, I would like to request the city's permission to reopen our martial arts academy. Please note that I've spoken to two staff at the Alameda County Health Department on May 4th, 2020, and asked if we are allowed to open under the provision of educational institutions. Ella and Chris advised us to reopen at our own discretion, so as long as we can practice social distancing, and if additional safety protocols are in place. If we are to reopen our doors, we will follow all of the city and county's social distancing protocols to highest degree, starting with limiting the amount of people that enter our facility, taking everyone's temperature before entering, and having safety masks, disinfectants and gloves for all participants and staff, and of course, disinfect our facility regularly via our janitorial services. If possible, we would like to speak with you in person to request the city's permission to reopen our doors, so we can once again serve our community. Your help will prevent us from closing our business permanently. Any insight, help or insight you can provide would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time and consideration. Respectfully committed, submitted, excuse me, Eric and Davinia Bonifacio, owners of the Liver Martial Arts Academy LLC. And that concludes the, the email portion.
Please read our Zoom comments received.
Okay, the Zoom comment says, "Has the city of Livermore officially made any overtures on behalf of restaurant owners to the alcohol beverage control on guidelines for serving alcohol on our parking lots or front sidewalks?" That's the question we received from Zoom.
Okay.
We've received no comments on YouTube, Mayor.
Okay, in that case, I'm going to close the public comment period. So a quick question, the, the last question that we had about discussions with Livermore businesses and serving alcohol.
Honorable Mayor, this is your city manager, Mark Roberts. The, the discussion with Alcohol Beverage and Control Board is, we are scheduled to, to have that discussion after we get direction from the council this evening regarding your item about opening up and adjusting some of our regulations for downtown to involve flex zone and other areas down there. So, once we have council direction, we will be reaching out to ABC. We, as you'll recall, we did work with them when we originally went, installed the improvements for downtown to make sure that there was a smooth transition for outdoor dining at that time. So we will be repeating that process once we get direction from the council.
Okay, and with regards to the Bonifaciros, the stay-in-place order and the social distancing, those are Alameda County, actually, the, the six Bay Area counties, and also the state of California. Those are not city regulations. But to their conversation with the county, would they be able to reopen, should the county grant the permission?
So yes, you are correct on that. It is the county that ultimately makes that interpretation. We can certainly work with them to make sure that they ultimately fall within one of the categories, which is permitted for opening. But ultimately, if Alameda County Health Department has concluded that they are within the current order, that would allow the opening if, if there is not delineation for them under the current order or under the FAQs. That generally would not be permitted.
Okay, and another question regarding the comments from Mr. Dunlop. It referred to mediation with city leaders. Do we have an idea of who those city leaders were? The reason I ask is, I was not included in those discussions. I was just curious if, if we know, know who they were working with.
We did not have a staff representative in those negotiations.
Okay, all right, so, and with regards to the hotel location, in the March election, that was overwhelmingly supported on the, the east side of Livermore Avenue by the voters. Isn't that correct?
That is correct.
And last question, the statement said a return of the hotel to a high-quality Marriott brand. It's my understanding that the procedure was always looking at bringing in a high-quality Marriott brand. Isn't that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, all right, very good. Well, thank you. I don't see anybody else wishing to speak. Just to recap, participation in tonight's meeting, this is being conducted pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act and recent executive orders issued by the governor to facilitate teleconferencing to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission at public meetings. The city of Livermore has met all of the applicable noticing requirements, and the public is welcome to participate in the meeting. The process that we'd be using, in addition to broadcasting over TV 30, we're using the Zoom meeting platform and YouTube. This allows members of the public to participate by submitting public comment through the YouTube or Zoom Q&amp;A features. The Zoom and YouTube meeting links are available on the city of Livermore website and on the agenda. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be submitted per person, per item. Comments should be no more than 500 words. If you submit multiple comments for a single item, the last comment will be read into the record, and the remaining comments will be added to the meeting record. The public comment period closes at conclusion of the comments being read into the record. We have received, the, the city council has received public comments that were submitted on items submitted before 12 o'clock today. Those have been sent to all the council members, and we have seen them. We will also be including all of the comments in the public record. So with that, we will be moving on to the consent calendar. These are items typically routine in nature, passed in a single motion. However, we do have comments. Does any of the member of the council wish to pull an item from the consent calendar for comment? I see no one unmuting themselves. So with that, we do have a number of public comments for the consent calendar, and I will ask the city clerk to read those into the record. Ms. Weber.
Thank you, Mayor. City clerk's office, please start with item 4.02.
This, these items, these responses came from our Google Docs, our Google Form. Item 4.02, James Folk, approve. Connie Naylor, I agree. Dean Mancini, should be, should be delayed to July 1st, 2021, one year, not six months. 402, Karen Rowland, yes, I support this. Jen Trummer, with the COVID crisis and so many people struggling financially, delaying the increase would benefit the people of Livermore. Angelo Infante, yes. Daniela Diaz Partenac, yes. Jeannie Harvey, I support. And Cheryl Pho, delay. That was 402 for Google Forms.
Do we have anything? We have not received any YouTube comments. Can we move to 4.03?
4.03 received one through the Google Form. Daniela Diaz Partenac, yes.
We can continue with item 4.04.
4.04, from the Googled form. Heather Day, yes, great idea. Lori Sevillah, I support the display of the rainbow flag. Marla Kirby, I support this resolution. Erin Cahill, please support this. Many who support Pride all over the nation have willingly supported the canceling of Pride festivities, not as an attack on who they are, but to support the greater good and health of our society. By showing the flag, we show that we continue to support our LGBT+ brethren. Connie Naylor, I agree. Erin McGuire, yes. Dean Mancini, in favor. Karen Rowland, yes, I support this. Kathleen McCandless, yes. Martha Metzler Gofranian, fully support this. Mike Cambera, Livermore should celebrate with rainbow flag and let LGBTQ people know it's a safe and welcoming community for everyone. Kevin Mays, approve. Daniel Dunning, I support resolution authorizing display of rainbow flag at Civic Center. Renee Hayes, definitely, yes. Excuse me, yes, definitely. Terry Stilwell, I concur, approve. Daniela Diaz Partenac, yes. Carol Pendegrass, yes. Trevor Deal, I would love to see this. Brian Cooper, I support raising the, of this flag during the month of June 2020. Jeannie Harvey, I do not support. Lisa Hensley Goldstein, yes. Cheryl Pho, display. Jill Zolkos, yes. Jennifer Burnett, no unless you plan to support flags for every protected class. And Danielle Glock, yes. And we do have one on, on Zoom, from Carl Winty, saying yes.
We also do not have any YouTube comments for this item. Item 4.05.
4.05 on the Google, Google Doc. Dean Mancini, in favor. Karen Rowland, no, I do not support this. Daniela Diaz Partenac, yes. And nothing on Zoom.
4.06.
Google Forms, Holly Landrum, I approve. Dean Mancini, not in favor, like the rest of us, no increases for one year. Karen Rowland, need more info on this. Daniela Diaz Partenac, yes. Lisa Hensley Goldstein, yes. And nothing currently on Zoom.
Item 4.09.
4.09, Karen Rowland, I do not support this. Nothing on Zoom.
Item 4.10.
Karen Rowland, yes, a must. Carol Pendegrass, yes. Lisa Hensley Goldstein, yes. Larry, Larry Dino, we have a small winery in Livermore. What is the timeline for us being able to reopen? COVID impact on Livermore has been low. Alameda curb has flattened. What are we waiting for? We can safely open our winery with tastings on our patio exceeding the Wine Institute guidelines. Perhaps COL can have a COVID inspector to inspect sites for reopening, and if they pass, then they can reopen. Please help us get open soon. Thank you. And nothing on Zoom for 410.
That concludes all the public comment we've received.
Okay, very good, thank you. Let's see, I feel compelled to comment on 4.06. One of the people said that, you know, no, no increases for a year. I think it's worthy to note that the city council hasn't had a raise since 2007. So we're, we're leading the charge and leading by example. So any comments that anyone has on the consent calendar? I'd entertain a motion. Moved by Councilmember Monroe, second, second by Vice Mayor Warner. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, roll call. Roll call, Ms. Weber.
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi, yes.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshon.
Hi. Okay, as we move into the public hearings and matters initiated and matters for consideration, I would like to, at this point in the meeting, pull 6.02. 6.02 is the discussion direction regarding the results of the passage of Measure P on the initiative. And since they have, CLCP has offered to pull the initiative. A question for the city attorney at this point, though. Mr. City Attorney, have we received a letter from the CLCP offering to pull the initiative?
My understanding is no. First of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor and honorable city council members. This is Jason, I'll call your city attorney. At this time, no, the city has not received a formal notice from the proponent withdrawing the initiative.
Okay, so what we, all we have seen is a press release, but we have not received a letter. Okay, so with that, I will still pull the item, but recognizing that we can bring it back if, if the, the facts change. Any objection to pulling the item? Okay, let's see anybody, okay. In that case, 6.02, we will pull for, for the future. But bringing it back to 5.01, this is the hearing to consider the downtown specific plan amendments to enable the implementation of the downtown plan approved by the city council. 5.01, okay, I'll hand that off to the city manager, Mr. Roberts.
Honorable Mayor, I am Mark Roberts, your city manager, and I'm going to introduce to associate planner Tricia Ponto, who will be giving your staff report on this item this evening.
All right. Good evening, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, can you see my slides? Are you able to see the slides?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect.
Seamless, very good.
Okay, so back in January 2018, the city council approved the downtown plan, which includes workforce housing, cultural facilities, new retail space, boutique hotel, and new parking structures. Later that year, the city council adopted downtown specific plan amendments to implement the plan, which essentially re-designated land uses in this area to lock in the various components of the plan. The following month, the city received a referendum challenging a portion of the amendments, and the city council ultimately repealed the amendments that were challenged. Then in May 2019, council adopted additional amendments that were not subject to the referendum. And now that, now that it's been over a year since the referendum, the California Elections Code allows the city to re-adopt all the amendments challenged by the referendum. So those are the amendments that we've included in the application tonight, with the exception of the amendments related to the hotel site, which we are not proposing for re-adoption at this time. which we are not proposing for readoption at this time. The planning commission reviewed the application on February 18th and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the amendments. The current downtown core land use map contains three sub areas, two of which have sub districts that relate to the specific land uses, such as locations for parking and the local performing arts theater. And the approved downtown plan spans all three of the existing sub areas. To facilitate redevelopment of the core consistent with the approved downtown plan, staff is proposing, proposing a new sub area four, which is shown here in the very dark red. Sub area four is divided into five new sub districts that would correspond to the different land use components within the approved downtown plan. The amendments will also allow more height for the L Street parking garage, which is located in sub district 4E. And then the revised core map also identifies new, the new Veterans Way. The specific plan amendment will make changes to chapters five, seven, and eight of the downtown specific plan. And most of the revisions affect chapter five, which includes the land uses and development standards of the downtown core. And again, the intent of the changes is to allow the specific uses, general layout, and development standards that are consistent with the approved plan. The changes to chapter seven and eight primarily include background information and references to Veterans Way and the new parking facilities. So the planning commission and staff recommend the council adopt a resolution finding the project consistent with the addendum to the downtown specific plan EIR, adopted by council back in May 2019, adopt a resolution approving the downtown specific plan amendments, and direct staff to file a notice of determination consistent with SEQA. That concludes my presentation, I'm available for questions.
Very good, thank you. Let's see, do we have any questions from the council at this point? Seeing no unmutes.
I unmuted.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Carling.
Tricia, thank you for that. Is it possible to, based on the information that we received from CLCP, is it, at this point, could we add back the amendment to restore the four-story hotel?
We could add that back in, but we also do have a development agreement with the hotel developer for a three-story hotel, so I'll let, I'll let Mark handle that question.
So adding a fourth story to your hotel would be a subsequent change. So in other words, you could direct your staff to go prepare that, and that would need a hearing before the, the planning commission. But the item before you this evening does not include that four-story. If you would like us to, we certainly could bring that back.
Well, that was one of the, one of the reasons that we went to the four-story hotel was because we heard from the community that they wanted additional surface parking next to the Bankhead Theater. And when we went to the four stories, I believe we were able to add a total of 24 ADA spaces, surface parking next to the Bankhead Theater. So if, if we do consider a four-story hotel, could we also consider bringing back those ADA spaces?
Yes, that would be something the previous site plan included that. We could certainly work to make sure that that was a part of any future site plan.
Okay, Vice Mayor Warner has his hand raised.
Yes, thank you. I would want to point out that, you know, tonight, we get these amendments done. But in the future, I do believe we should consider the fourth story as an option at the discretion of the developer, and that it's not a requirement on our part that we have the agreement. We're trying to get this thing done. And I think the perspective that we need to take here is, what is best in the hotelier's opinion for what it should be? I think we enumerated some benefits of the fourth story in the past. But we have to also understand we've got COVID, and that we're going to have to consider, does that have any impact on the hotel design? I'm pretty sure the hotelier will be thinking about all these things. But in the interest of proceeding as planned, that we bring back the fourth story as an option at the discretion of the hotelier, that it's not a demand that the hotel be one thing or another, but let the private sector figure out what is best. This is where I would come, come out on this. So at the appropriate time, I'm prepared to move staff recommendations with respect to this. And then I'm not quite sure whether it's matters initiated or whether we can do that now, is just direct staff to come back with the fourth story as an option at the discretion of the hotelier.
Okay, any other questions at this point? Let's see.
No, I'd second the motion, but I don't.
We haven't got a motion yet, I gotta, we gotta go to public.
I know that, but he made a motion, I thought.
Okay, I.
I, I said I would, but I screwed up the.
That's all right, that's okay. I just always hold, hold that comment, and what I'll do is I'll open up the public hearing. We'll hear public comment, and then, then you can make a motion. Okay, it's the attorney weighed back out. Council, Vice Mayor Warner, you still have your hand raised?
Mistake, let me clear that.
Okay, all right, at that point, no further questions. I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have public comments? City Clerk's office.
Mayor, we have public comment that we received over Google Docs this afternoon.
Okay.
Please read comments for item 5.01.
All right. From Stephen Dunbar. Per the Better Livermore News release, I support allowing the hotel to return to four stories with private underground parking and allowing for a more upscale brand. However, I do not support attempting to move the housing north of Railroad Avenue. Moving that housing will hold, while holding the current housing space for additional parkland would involve, one, getting around the deed restriction, and two, needing to somehow purchase the northern parcel without the proceeds of selling the remaining southern parcel. This would mean tens of millions of dollars of additional cost, plus the added cost to the city or the developer to demolish all those existing businesses on the north side of railroad. To put that expense on affordable housing is morally wrong. That expense means delay, and that delay is also morally wrong. We have owned this parcel since 2006. It is already reprehensible enough. Affordable housing is not Better Livermore's wish list dumping grounds. See what happens when you pile a wish list items to an affordable housing development? Annie listed a reference to the LA Times website. Next is Ian Carlin. As the council moves forward with downtown, please remember that affordable housing money is a large part of why this is possible. Any changes, e.g., moving housing to another location that delay this component, should not be considered in light of the large affordability challenge in Livermore. Holly Landrum, I approve. Dean Mancini, I'm in favor to move the downtown plan forward. Sandy Gomes, yes. I'm, I'm, I'm just going to spell the person's name, I don't want to make too much of a mistake. It's M.A.T.E.U.S.Z., Montreal. It is the fact that renters and working-class residents of Livermore are underrepresented at these meetings. They are dealing with double-digit rent increases that are forcing many out of the city. Yet the city continues to entertain proposals that prioritize free parking for those privileged enough to own a car and eat out at restaurants. Ironically, the privileged few who oppose housing don't want Livermore to turn into San Francisco, but that is exactly the path we are on. A city where, a city where composed entirely of high-paid tech workers, older legacy residents, and a legion of homeless. Daniela Diaz Partenac, yes. Lisa Hensley Goldstein, yes. Julie Eichelberger, yes. And, and we don't have anything on Zoom.
We've also not received anything on comment, on YouTube. I'm sorry, that concludes the public comment.
Very good, thank you. Certainly, thank you, good comments, all. Certainly appreciate the public weighing in. This is something that we have sought to do for the last several years, is to take public comment as we've moved ahead with the downtown plan. And this downtown plan truly is the community's vision. And again, I certainly appreciate everyone's very well-thought-out and insightful comments tonight. So with that, I'm going to close the public comment period, close the public hearing, and bring, yeah, yes.
I'm sorry, we received one additional comment at the very end from Carl Wentie.
Yes, thank you.
It says, yes, move forward, make Livermore the best it can be.
Great, then thank you, it's Mr. Wentie. So he's always been good at getting those cards in just right under the wire. So thank you. But again, thank you for all your insightful comments tonight. This is something that we have tried to do throughout this process, is to have public comment and have the public weigh in. And that's how this community vision was developed, was from hearing from thousands of people over the course of a number of years. And just to reiterate, 85% of the people that commented during the public outreach process that was chaired by Councilmember Carling and Vice Mayor Warner, 85% of the people that participated wanted the hotel to be on South Livermore Avenue. And this is where this plan places it. This is part of the community vision. So with that, I see that Vice Mayor Warner has his hand raised. Vice Mayor.
I, yeah, thank you. And so with that, I would like to move stack, staff recommendations unconditionally, that this is the right step, it affirms the plan we have in place. And so that's my motion. And then separately, I'll just point out, we can deal with directing staff to come back with the fourth story as an option at the discretion of the developer.
Okay, so a motion with a sub minor motion, as it were.
Not a minor motion, I just want to, I just want to make this clean. We're going to get this done. We need to do it, it affirms the plan. But I'm just alluding to separately, we'll deal with directing staff, whether it's now or under matters initiated, to come back with an option at the discretion of the hotelier for our consideration.
Okay, let me just ask the city attorney to, to weigh in this, or also, or the city manager, is that sufficient direction to bring back the consideration for a fourth-story hotel? Should the, the developer of the hotel believe that that is, is, is possible?
Honorable Mayor, this is Jason Don Call, your city attorney. I believe the way that's being, the current motion is being structured by Vice Mayor Warner makes sense. His motion is to approve staff's recommendation, that's a separate action. The direction for return relative to a four-story can be taken up either at this point and give direction as a matter is initiated, or we can wait until that point later in the agenda. I think the current motion before you is to, there's been a move with no second, is to pursue staff's recommendation. So I think if we pursue that one, conclude with that item, then we can pick you, if you so choose, you can pick up Vice Mayor Warner's matters initiated and proceed from there.
Okay, city manager waiting for a moment, and then he stepped back. Mr. Roberts?
I did want to clarify, I would agree with your city attorney on that. The second item is that if you did direct us to come back with an amendment permitting a fourth story, your zoning ordinance in that particular case is a maximum height and maximum number of stories. So it would be consistent with the intent of the vice mayor's motion, which is it allows up to that, it does not require that.
Okay, Councilmember Monroe has her hand raised, as does Councilmember Carling. I'll take Councilmember Monroe first.
Well, I was going to defer to Councilmember Carling to do the second, because he had asked before, but since I'm here, I'll do it, so I second the motion. Sorry about that. But I actually had a question, separate from that, which is, we aren't discussing moving housing at all. So, so a number of the public comments were regarding issues brought up by Mr. Dunlop's public comment. My presumption is that's, that would be a separate issue well down the road, correct?
There is nothing in your motion this evening that would change your adopted plan.
Very good, thank you.
Well, discussing the effect of moving housing at some future date, date, you know, down the road, that wouldn't be a discussion we should be having now, correct?
That would be a separate item at a separate time, that is correct.
Okay, all right, Councilmember Carling, you still have a comment?
No, I was going to second the motion, but she beat me to it, so I'm.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay, it's fine.
As long as we're moving this ahead, but I just wanted to recognize the leadership that Dr. Carling and Dr. Warner both provided as we developed this downtown plan. The, the fact that you two chaired that, that outreach committee, and the, the tremendous effort that was made over months to create this, this community vision. And I just want to publicly thank both of you for leading that effort. And it was a tremendous community effort, so thank you both very much for that.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll ask the city clerk to conduct roll call.
Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Councilmember Coomer.
Aye.
Councilmember Monroe.
Yes, with pleasure.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Aye.
Mayor Marshon.
At last, aye, thank you. It's a long time coming, so great, looking forward to, to moving ahead with the community vision. Okay, moving on to six.
Wait, just if I may.
Yes.
As we said, I can do the matters initiated now for staff to come back with the option up to the four stories at the discretion of the developer.
Honorable Mayor, if you could poll the council on that.
Okay, okay, well, I'll ask the, the city clerk to poll the council.
Councilmember Carling.
Yes, I agree.
Councilmember Coomer.
I am fully on board with that.
Councilmember Monroe.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Yes.
Mayor Marshon.
Yes, so looks like we got, I can't really go by head nods, because I can see them, but it doesn't, doesn't really count, does it?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, we will begin to work on that and bring something back for you later in the year.
Okay, very good, well, thank you. Now, moving on to, again, just to reiterate that I have polled 6.02, because the, it appears that the initiative for November will be polled. But now we go to 6.01, which is our update on the Subcommittee on Homelessness. I will tell you that I participated in a town hall from Supervisor Hagerty this afternoon on efforts on homelessness. And I certainly appreciate the, the efforts that our Subcommittee on Homelessness is doing. So I would like to hand this over to the city manager, and then we'll also hear from the Subcommittee as well.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, I am your city manager, Mark Roberts. You, as a council, appointed a Subcommittee consisting of Councilmember Monroe and Councilmember Carling to serve as your homeless Subcommittee. We, as your staff, have had a number of meetings with the Subcommittee, and the Subcommittee has provided, presided over a few public meetings as well as we developed essentially short, medium, and long-term solutions and tactics to address our homeless population here. Obviously, the COVID-19 crisis has substantially impacted our efforts on this item. And we, as a group, your staff and your Subcommittee, we have been working with the county on this to ultimately provide services. At this point, I'm going to introduce your Community Development Director, Paul Spence, who will ultimately introduce the item and introduce our staff, who will be providing a brief update on the activities we've been doing. And at that point, we'll turn it over to the Subcommittee members to add their perspective to that. So with that, Mr. Spence, if you can introduce the item for us.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts, I'm Paul Spence, your Community Development Director. And we have been working extensively over the last several months through our Emergency Operations Center responding to the COVID-19 crisis. We've done a lot of good work on the homeless front to, to try to help our homeless neighbors make it through this crisis as well. And with us this evening, we have Josh Thurman, who's one of our new employees, very happy to have him on board. make it through this crisis as well. And with us this evening, we have Josh Thurman, who's one of our new employees, very happy to have him on board in our Housing and Human Services Division. And Josh will give us an update, both on where we are regards to the committee itself, and then what we've done recently as a result of the COVID-19 crisis. Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Spence. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, and staff members, public that's joining us tonight. My name is Josh Thurman. I'm the Homeless Services Analyst in the Housing and Human Services Division of the Community Development Department. First, I want to thank the mayor and the council for your continued, continued support of our collective work to address homelessness and affordable housing in Livermore. I'd like to give a little context of the council Subcommittee on Homelessness, and then I'll move into what the city is doing to provide services to our unsheltered residents during the COVID-19 pandemic. On December 10th, 2018, the Livermore City Council appointed Vice Mayor Carling and Councilmembers Monroe to City Council Subcommittee on Homelessness to develop strategic framework to address short, medium, and long-term strategies. The Subcommittee work plan included a series of community meetings with presentations from experts and service providers to expand the community dialogue around homelessness issues and to discuss potential program strengths, challenges, and resources. The City Council Subcommittee on Homelessness has worked closely with staff to research and identify programs and strategies that align local needs and available resources to provide immediate health, safety, and dignity measures to individuals and families experiencing homelessness. On July 29th, 2019, the council approved the Subcommittee on Homelessness's recommendations on several short-term pilot programs. The programs are funded with the Homeless Emergency Aid Program Funds, otherwise known as HEAP. The funds are one-time funds to address homelessness and must be expended by March 31st, 2021. The council approved the regional program with CityServe of the Tri-Valley to provide crisis stabilization services. The Livermore specific programs include trash service, safe parking, cleanup services, and shower and laundry facilities. In addition, a critical piece to solving the homelessness crisis is providing dedicated, affordable housing units for our homeless residents. The most recent example is the Chestnut Square Senior Housing, which dedicated five project-based Section Eight units for Livermore homeless seniors. The five units include case management and supportive services. While we continue to work on the priorities set forth by the Council Subcommittee on Homelessness, we've slightly shifted gears to address the emergency response to COVID-19 and our unsheltered residents. As you all know, on Monday, March 16th, counties throughout the Bay Area region ordered a shelter-in-place advising all residents that work in nonessential businesses to shelter and home until May 31st. The shelter-in-place has put a lot of additional strain on our unsheltered residents in Livermore. To address many of the health and safety concerns our unsheltered residents are facing, the city and its nonprofit partners responded with massive effort to provide services to our unsheltered. When the shelter-in-place was ordered and businesses had to close their doors, we recognized our unsheltered population didn't have anywhere to charge their cell phones, which was concerning on two levels. One, CityServe and other providers make regular contact with their unsheltered clients via cellphone when they aren't able to do a face-to-face meeting. The inability to charge their phones made it difficult to keep in contact with clients. Second, our unsheltered population need to have their cell phones to have access to information related to the pandemic and other resources. In response, the city purchased a hundred solar cellphone chargers using county-approved HEAP funds. The chargers were delivered to CityServe on April 13th prior to their Royal Creek Outreach effort. Priority is given to those who are living outdoors. Since then, the cities of Oakland, Fremont, and Berkeley, and several other cities are taking Livermore's lead in purchasing solar chargers for their unsheltered population. Also, due to the shelter-in-place, Asbury Methodist Church discontinued their shower program for the unsheltered. In response, the city hired an industrial hygiene firm to establish cleaning and safety protocols for our unsheltered residents and Asbury staff. Protocols were put in place, and Asbury successfully relaunched the shower and laundry program on April 20th. Last week, May 4th through the 6th, we had thirty-eight residents receive showers and twelve residents used laundry facilities. Service providers are also on-site to provide support services for those using the shower and laundry program. Tri-City Health Center is providing a physician's assistant and medical assistant on Mondays. Abode Services is on-site on Tuesdays and Mondays to provide outreach services and COVID-19 screenings. City Serve is on-site Wednesdays to provide outreach and wellness checks, while Block by Block has an ambassador on-site to remind people to keep their distance and provide light outdoor cleanup. And Monthly Miracles is staffing the laundry program. So that's quite an effort to get that back up and running that we're quite proud of. Another thing we recognize is the essential, it's essential for our unsheltered population to have the ability to wash their hands and a place to use the restroom. Currently, we place three portable restrooms and three hand washing stations located at the Royal Creek. There are two additional hand washing stations located on Railroad and East Stanley, near the bridge. They are fully serviced one to two times per week by the company we rent them from, and our biohazard provider Block by Block is sweeping them and restocking them with supplies daily. During this pandemic, we needed the ability to get some of our highest-risk and medically fragile unsheltered residents into shelter. City Serve is currently managing a hotel program for medically vulnerable homeless individuals. They are working with two Tri-Valley hotels, one in Livermore and one in Pleasanton. City Serve is assessing potential program participants and then placing them on a waiting list. Currently, thirty-three people are participating in the Tri-Valley program, with fifteen of those from Livermore. City staff has helped identify the Livermore Hotel and is currently funding nine to fifteen hotel rooms per week through the HEAP funds. City Serve is providing ongoing supportive services for clients placed in the hotels, acting as a liaison between hotel management and clients, and coordinating with other providers like Open Heart Kitchen to meet participant needs. Staff is continuing to work with the county through the Emergency Operations Center to bring on additional hotel rooms for those at risk during this pandemic. I'll conclude with some good news, and I think it's directly related to the city's quick response to serve our unsheltered during the COVID-19 pandemic. On Friday, May 8th, Alameda County Public Health Department, City Serve, Open Heart Kitchen, Abode Services, and Livermore Police Department conducted a COVID-19 testing site for our homeless residents. Twenty-eight people were tested, and today we received notice from the county that all twenty-eight are negative for COVID-19. Again, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for your support. And now I'd like to turn it back to the Subcommittee on Homelessness members, council members Carling and Monroe.
Well, thanks very much, Josh. That was very thorough. The only thing that I would add, and then I'll turn it over to Trish for her comments, is you might mention the amount of food that Open Heart Kitchen is providing through drive-through at the Robert Livermore. I know what they're providing on the order of a hundred and fifty meals a day. Is that about right, or is it even more by now?
It's more they're doing between thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred meals per week.
I think that's remarkable. The folks may remember that Open Heart Kitchen was providing meals at Asbury Methodist, but because of COVID, they've had to change the process. It hasn't meant that they've reduced the amount of service they're providing and all those meals. I've also mentioned that Meals on Wheels is continuing to serve homebound seniors. And I know that the Livermore Joint Unified School District is also providing meals, I think, daily to those that are under eighteen. Is that right, Josh? Can you confirm that?
Yes, that's correct.
But my point is that there are many people that are still struggling for, for three meals a day. And we have plenty of other folks in town that are volunteering and providing those kinds of resources. So I think it's an additional piece of information to Josh's very thorough report. At this point, I'll turn it over to Trish. I think she had a few more comments, but again, thanks to Josh, Fran, Claudia, Eric, and that whole team. I think you guys are doing a great job. Thanks.
All right, and I would like to echo that, particularly as we've transitioned into this new COVID-19 world, not so new anymore, we're entering week nine, I think. I know that there is a lot of people in Livermore who are concerned about this. As Councilmember Carling said, it takes all of us. It's, we can't do this alone. City staff can't do it alone. And so I just wanted to make sure people knew what they could do. So recently, the Tri-Valley Nonprofit Alliance established the Tri-Valley Nonprofit Fund, and that supports a number of the partners working with us, Axis Community Health, Open Heart Kitchen, City Serve of the Tri-Valley, Tri-Valley Haven, Senior Support of the Tri-Valley, and Spectrum, which does Meals on Wheels. And so people can go directly there if they want to find ways to help. We also, the city has a few website, webpage on the website that both at the homelessness webpage, and then also on the COVID-19 webpage, directing people to help in particular ways. So for everybody who are first responders and who are essential workers, masks are needed. But in particular, this population is one where masks and other equipment to keep people safe are needed. So that's another place you can go. But, you know, that's, that's the one thing I would say that this is, we all continue to struggle. And I want to compliment staff on what they're doing, and we'll continue to work forward together.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, thank you both for your leadership on the committee to combat homelessness. I certainly appreciate that. This is an ongoing problem, and it's, it's, it's going to take significant resources. In the last two years in Alameda County, the homeless population went up forty-three percent. So this is, and we haven't even seen the impacts since COVID-19, because this is going to put a tremendous strain on resources and on many, many households. So thank you for the, the great work that you're doing and that you will continue to do. Once again, to the staff, thank you for the efforts, the folks at City Serve, Open Heart Kitchen, Tri-Valley Haven, the Shepherd's Gate, Sojourner House, the tremendous effort that this community is putting forward. So thanks to all of those that are, that are working to combat homelessness. So thank you all. Any further comments from the council, from the committee? Staff, thank you. Thank you all. Moving, the public comment period. Do we have any public comments? Ms. Weber?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we do. City Clerk's Office, please read comments from Google Docs and Zoom.
From Google Docs, we have Ian Like, "I support getting homeless off the streets." Matuz Montreal, "The homeless crisis is a housing crisis. The number of homeless will continue to rise unless housing is affordable for the average Livermore resident." Brian Cooper, "Action is badly needed to help the homeless find their way off our streets and into safer situations. The homeless should be guided with reasonable and compassionate law enforcement involvement where needed toward resources for housing, shelter, food, mental health, medical support, et cetera. This is a difficult problem to solve, but I encourage the Subcommittee in its work towards these ends, actions that will help move the homeless into safer spaces, keeping our streets clean and more welcoming to residents." Lisa Hensley Goldstein, yes. Gina Casperson, "Need to get handle on this problem. Don't want to come home from San Francisco to see, excuse me, don't want to come home from work in San Francisco to see my hometown becoming like them." And we have one item on, response on Zoom from Carl Winty. "Thank you for all that we do to care for the people. Please do not stagnate. Please continue to work to maximize dollars that make a direct impact. Please work to reduce overhead of administration and maximize the impact of helping, excuse me, of directly helping people."
We also received an additional comment on Zoom from Matthew Foozy, says the city of Livermore has an incredible leadership team. And we received no comments on YouTube.
Well, thank you. I'll certainly agree with the last comment. We do have an incredible leadership team, and certainly appreciate the leadership from the committee as well. This is going to take a tremendous coordinated effort. And one of the things that we're doing is coordinating the resources, which are very limited. But by leveraging those resources and coordinating the efforts of multiple agencies throughout the region, we're getting the maximum impact. So with that, I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. Any further comments, questions from the council?
I just wanted to throw in my support for what Councilmembers Carling and Monroe are doing to help facilitate. We're making some progress here. It doesn't look like much, I suppose, if you're out there sleeping in a creek bed. However, we are, we are moving things, we're getting things done, and thanks to their hard work as well as the staff. So much appreciated on my part.
Thank you, Councilmember Coomer. I see that Councilmember Monroe has her hand raised.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to Mr. Winty's comment about reducing administrative costs. And I appreciate the sentiment. But I also want to point out that having those, managing this is, is a job that's not just a full-time job. It is a job that requires people who are trained, people who can go out and manage this. And that, that is what the administrative staff is for. That's what city staff is for. That's what our public servants are for. So I know we run a lean chip, and I know that it needs to stay that way, particularly in the current, the current climate. But I want to make sure that we all, and I know Mr. Winty does this because he also really appreciates what we do. So I understand it's a balance, but I want us to understand, us as a city, to understand that those people who have the expertise actually are the ones who are able us to move forward on all, on all of our projects.
Great, thank you. And the, the success that we have at Chestnut Square, that, that was truly remarkable. And I see more and more of that, especially when we can bring Vineyard 2.0 online. So looking forward to that. Anybody else, any further comments? Okay, we will receive the report. Thank you very much. I don't believe we need a motion for this. Nope, I guess not. Moving on to six point oh three, this here. Okay, six point oh three is the 2020 Livermore State and Federal Legislative Platform. I see the city manager has stepped up to the, to the plate.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. I am Mark Roberts, your city manager. And I want to introduce Christine Martin, your deputy city manager, who will provide the staff report for the state and federal legislative platform for you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Good evening, honorable mayors and members of the City Council. As Mark stated, I am Christine Martin, your deputy city manager. The first, the city's first legislative platform was adopted back in 2013 and focused on state legislation. And then in 2015, the platform was expanded to cover federal bills. Every year, annual updates are provided to reflect adjustments based on changing city needs, interests, and conditions at the regional, state, and federal levels. The platform provides a framework to respond quickly to bills and communicate with legislators affecting issues in Livermore. The platform has eleven focus areas. They are local control, fiscal sustainability, affordable housing and homelessness, planning and sustainability, infrastructure, job creation and economic development, libraries, public safety, science and technology and innovation, transportation and parking, and lastly, water. The platform is attached as an exhibit to your resolution and is also available online. Staff is recommending that City Council adopt Staff is recommending that City Council adopt the resolution approving the 2020 Livermore State and Federal Legislative Platform, and staff is available for any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions from the City Council at this point? I don't see any hands raised. Oh, Councilmember Monroe.
Sorry, it took me a minute there. Yeah, I, I'm getting some weird feedback. I had some more general comments. So first of all, this is great, but I did wonder about one thing about infrastructure. I know at the last meeting, I, we had a discussion about looking at perhaps wireless or some form of internet for the city. I'm wondering if that, if we might think about that as being part of infrastructure at this point. Since then, I've seen that being discussed as, as a necessity. I don't know whether it's can be added at this point or whether that would be a later decision, but yeah, is that a possibility?
Okay, I'm looking to, so you're looking to add specifically Councilmember Monroe?
Yeah.
Would that, would that come under technology?
I would say it would come under infrastructure. I mean, I think what we're looking at right now is what do we, you know, what do people need as public goods? And particularly, I think what this, what this time has shown is that we, we as a society absolutely need this as, to go forward. Those people who don't have access to good internet are very distinctly at a disadvantage. So just as we have roads, just as we have water, which very different category, I recognize water keeps us alive, but you know, this maybe isn't the category of roads. So yeah, I mean, I think would be infrastructure.
Okay, I'm just looking at standard, looking at the science and technology. If that, innovation, if that would cover that as well. But let me see where the city, city manager, you comment on it, please?
So we could certainly enumerate essentially electronic connectivity and facilities to support that as part of your, either of your areas there, infrastructure, or as far as science, technology. So that would be a support of federal and state legislation that would expand connectivity and access to digital resources. If you wanted to add that to your platform in either of those two areas, that would be fine. It doesn't affect how it ultimately operates the platform. Staff uses that as guidance. But if you wish to adopt something like that, we could put it in either of those two, two areas, if that's the council's pleasure.
That's an excellent point, because broadband access and the internet access as, as infrastructure has been a longstanding piece of support coming from the US Conference of Mayors. So that would be an interesting addition. I see Vice Mayor Warner has his hand raised.
Yeah, I would just add that I do think we should have that explicitly in our agenda. And that it does strike me is that it's a basic utility. It's just one form of infrastructure. And that's where I would put it. And that's like saying, well, we got to get sewer under science and technology because there's science there, you know?
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, I agree. I think that that would be a good point to, to add that, because it is part of infrastructure. It's something that is certainly has been expanding, and it's something that's proven itself to be critically important, especially now where people are being educated from home. You know, virtual learning now is even more important.
Right. So I, I think the question is, is it a public utility? Is it private public partnership? What is it? So I would ask that their staff come back with, what exactly is the form of this that we're proposing? And one example is downtown, maybe to help the businesses, we make sure that we had free internet, internet downtown. But how do we do that? So come back with not only the legislative platform around this thing, but what is it we're actually advocating specifically?
City manager.
So for your legislative platform, if you wanted to include language, we would be agnostic sort of on the how that would, so that would be supporting state and federal legislation to expand access to information services and the internet. And then as a separate item, we could certainly, we already, based on a previous matters initiated, are doing exploration of exploring that locally, using local resources and exploring both, all of the items that the vice mayor noted. So we already have that direction. If you wish to add something to your platform, we could do that this evening.
Councilmember Monroe?
Right, so this leads into a second comment, which, so I, I understand that this would be, in addition to the legislative piece, I think that's great. I think we should, provided everyone else does too. Do I need to make a motion or anything, or is this just direction?
No, we stopped.
We can't do that yet. Yeah. I also had some comments just about the overall structure. Should I wait on those until the public comment, or would now be the time?
Let's wait on, this is primary questions, and then we'll take public comment, and then we'll open it back up for comment from the council.
Okay, then I'm done.
Okay. Any further questions? All right. Moving on, I will open up the public comment period for 6.03 to the City Clerk's Office.
Thank you, Mayor. We've received public comment via email, Google Forms, and Zoom. City Clerk's Office, please read those comments.
Received via email. From Andrew Barker, "Dear Mayor and councilmembers, I'm writing to ask you to adjust your legislative platform to correct its overbroad insistence on local control in every matter. This is most strongly stated in item one in the local control section of the proposed 2020 platform, which currently reads, 'Oppose legislative attempts to restrict local authority or decision-making.' In previous discussions of our statewide housing affordability crisis, Mayor Marchand has often stated that the local decision-making of city councils in San Francisco and on the peninsula have made the problem much worse. Similarly, Councilmember Warner repeatedly points out that housing costs are a regional issue that Livermore cannot fully address with its own authority. It is clear that the council knows that regional issues such as housing and transportation require regional decision-making. But your proposed legislative platform fails to reflect that. It is simply not the case that local control in every instance, over every issue, is in the best interest of those citizens of Livermore. Please amend Local Control, item one quoted above to read, 'Oppose legislative attempts to restrict local authority or decision-making over matters that are best handled at the local level. In addition, I ask that you also amend the following related items in your platform. One, remove the last sentence from Affordable Housing and Homelessness, item one, as it is just a statement and not a legislative priority. Two, remove the phrase 'local land use authority' and, from how Affordable Housing and Homelessness, item nine. Three, remove Planning and Sustainability, item one, from the platform. The local control exercised by many California cities is hurting your citizens. Please do not waste your reputation lobbying for those other cities to maintain that control. Sincerely, Andrew Barker.'" Received via Google Docs from Stephen Dunbar. "I generally agree with Mr. Barker's points on this topic. I think it is generally understood that local control absolutism isn't actually what the council wants. Local control absolutism has led to peninsula cities taking far too much advantage of their existing leverage. It is especially unfair with regards to temporary tax benefits to entice new office space, something that only rich, excuse me, something that only rich cities can afford to do in the first place. I suggest modifying the language around local control and mandate points. However, it may be difficult to exactly clarify the intended goal in a short period. You could also consider changing the position to monitor. With the current legislative environment already significantly slowed down, you might have additional time to respond to legislative developments as they occur." And received via Zoom from Carl Wentie. "Thanks and appreciation to city staff, team of awesome people, and to the City Council for serving their community."
And we've received no public comments via YouTube.
Okay, so is that for the public comment? Okay, I will close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. Vice Mayor Warner, you had your hand raised.
Yes, I would like to say that I, I think the comments on being absolutism on the local control, you know, absolutely anything doesn't make sense, but I would modify it this way. At the moment, it's, it's the local control is an issue, and some of the cities are taking advantage of it. But if you think on a regional basis, and even on a statewide basis, it's the metrics by which they measure our performance that matter. So where I would come out on this, I would give up a little on local control only on the proviso that the measures be appropriate. So for instance, they talk about a fair housing ratio or allocation. But as we've often pointed out, why isn't the measure the housing-to-jobs balance? And that the, what cities be measured on is that they have that ratio right. And what, you know, the mayor has pointed out is way out of whack on the peninsula. So I would only accede to backing off on local control under the proviso that the metric is appropriate. But right now, I believe the metrics are wrong-headed. That the solution isn't to allocate more housing to the suburbs and then force more transportation. So just back, backing up to, if you had the right measures and the right goals, then it would be appropriate. But right now, I frankly don't have trust that the state or the region is using the right way to think about the problem. And we would have to agree on that before I would back off on local control.
I agree. I think we've seen with the CASA compact, where a group of the cities that caused the problem took a position of control, and their solution was to have the city of Livermore and other small cities build the housing so that they could continue to, to bring in jobs. And that they're looking to have cities subsidize the cost of transit to get folks into the job centers. So this is one of the concerns that I have, is the unfunded mandates that would be brought onto the cities. So I agree with the, with Vice Mayor. It's, 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 how do you, what are your metrics to determine what's in the best interest of the locals and for local control? Right. So I have, Trish Monroe, your comment, your hand is raised?
Yep, I'm, I'm turning my mute, lowering the hand, doing all the necessary things that Zoom makes, makes necessary. So what's interesting to me, so first of all, I have said very publicly and often that I think local control is just not very good language. I think cities should drop it, because appropriately, what we, what we need is appropriate local control. And I'm going to repeat the, an example I've used before, which is that if you, if you compare what we ask our residents in Livermore to do with their own homes, we do not walk into their homes and tell them where to arrange the furniture and how to paint the walls. But we do say, you know, we're not real happy if you put paint down the drain, because that affects everyone. So by the same token, when I want local control over how we place housing, how we develop housing, how we think about that, for example. But I also want to make sure that regionally, we are working together on these issues for precisely the reason that total local control is what gets us 580, although 580 is pretty empty these days. So I, I looked at this, at that issue in particular. And then I also looked at the affordable housing and homelessness, you know, some of the other issues along here, the affordable housing and homelessness in particular. And the problem with the way they're worded right now is that if I lived in a city that, you know, where I did not, which I felt was not maybe doing its job, then I, I could use some of these same, the same language and use it to support doing what I in Livermore might consider the wrong thing to do regionally. What I'm, but, but at the same time, I understand that being in Livermore, we actually are doing it pretty right, I think. We have intentions, and those are being enacted in our plans going forward to make, go for affordable housing, to build according to the RENA numbers, to, to do the right things. And we, we've done that. We're working towards that jobs, housing, and while doing the best we can with transportation, but certainly working towards a jobs, housing balance. So I'm not convinced that the wording here reflects Livermore as precisely as it could. And I'm wondering if the problem really is that we don't have an overall statement of how we think about this, what a value statement of who we are. And going back up to the top here. I, yeah. I'm wondering if at the, in the introduction, saying something about the way we think about local and regional. Because when I look through the other issues, there's a whole lot of regional cooperation going on. So I, I understand the intent. I'm, I'm not thrilled with the language on a lot of it, just because it doesn't do what I would hope it would do with expressing who we are legislatively. I don't know how to fix that other, but again, each individual item could be just fine. I think what it needs is an overarching statement. So.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
Now, I agree that it needs the overarching statement, but I come back to, this isn't about local versus regional control so much as what are you trying to do? And I think that, let's, let's get to an agreement on what we're trying to do, and how do we achieve it, and how we measure it. And then we can talk about local control. But in, where I see this argument is, until there's agreement on how to do it, that saying, oh, I'll give away the control, and I'll let, I'll trust somebody else to figure it out. At the moment, I don't. So I think we could put it, as Councilmember Monroe stated, we could put an overarching statement in there, that this is more about what we're trying to achieve than an argument about states' rights versus federal or whatever, because that's always there. But I can see us only agreeing to cooperate if we agree on what we're trying to achieve. And I would do that before I would say, I'll give up the control, you figure it out.
Well, one of the things that we've seen from, you know, what comes from the state, is we just saw that one county was absolved from having to meet their housing numbers just because the state decided they shouldn't have to meet the same standards that everybody else does. So once again, I agree with the Vice Mayor about how do we, how do we look at what the metrics are going to be? So with that, I understand that we have
We asked the Assistant City Manager, City Manager, to comment. I think we can go with what we have now, but maybe we could come back with a, a potential overarching statement. Do you have sufficient information to do that?
Honorable Vice Mayor, this is your city manager, Mark Roberts. So yes, I think we have, if it was the council's direction to essentially add additional language at the beginning of the section that dealt with local control as a part of an overarching purpose statement, at that point, we can certainly do that. The document, of course, is your guidance to your staff and allows us to respond to legislation mainly at the state level, but also at the federal level in a timely fashion. As you all know, in a typical year, it is quite active. And even this year, when we would think that there would be nothing else on the agenda except for items related to the crisis, we still have several major housing and development-related bills still moving through the process. So we would prefer that you give us some guidance on that platform this evening. We certainly heard the discussion of noting that some of the terms could have been taken out of context without essentially a contact statement. We can work on that as your staff and return later in the year to see if we have captured the intent that you're looking for. Again, I think the main item here is for you to be comfortable with the with the direction that you are giving us. And then, of course, you always get copies of anything that your staff provides comments on. And if you see somehow that we are out of step with what you believe the meaning of the platform is, that's a a very effective way to give feedback so that we can correct course.
Okay, see, Councilmember Carling, your hand is raised?
Yes, thank you. I I thought the comments that Mr. Barker provided were actually pretty reasonable. I don't know why we couldn't incorporate those. I agree with Trish. I think we overuse this local control and I I kind of like, not suggesting we put this in there, but I think Mr. Dunbar, at least from my point of view, hit the nail on the head when he talked about local control absolutism. I think at least my observation from participating with League of California Cities is that's a mantra that cities use quite often for reasons that may be different from one city to another, but I I think there's lots of different ways to approach it and to always fall back on local loss of local control as being anathema to them, I just think is wrong. I also don't, I mean, Vice Mayor brought up, he wants to, how do we get at the right measure of the controls? I have no idea. I mean, and he wants to know what he wants to reach some agreement before we we do this. I don't, I mean, agreement with whom? I'm not sure I understand what those points are. So that's where I am. I, the overarching statement, I think, is fine. And again, I think we just use this as guidance. And I don't know that it has to be perfect, but some of the, I just don't understand some of the comments made earlier.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Warner.
Well, maybe I'll I'll try again. My point was, yeah, I think that some of the comments that Mr. Barker made and the Councilmember Monroe made are good. But let's step back. What what's the argument about? It's only when somebody, if something isn't going the way you think it ought to go, that this argument of local control comes up as some kind of absolute barrier. My point was, before we say, oh, we're okay with giving up local control because we trust somebody to do something unspecified what they're trying to achieve, unspecified as to how it's to be measured, I just wouldn't do that. So I would rather say, in this specific instance, it makes sense to cooperate regionally. But first of all, let's see if regionally, without a power grab or give up, that we can agree on what we're trying to do. Because if you can't have a reasonable conversation about what you're trying to achieve, how you plan on achieving it and how you're going to measure it, why would you argue about local control? Because that's just a red herring. The real issue is, what's the point? Is it the goal, a jobs, housing balance? Or is the goal a regional housing allocation based on some other thing? So I come back to it. I think it's fairly simply stated. What are we trying to do and how are we going to measure it? That's the point. It isn't states' rights versus federal, et cetera, is really, what are we trying to do?
Who's we, though? That's what I don't understand. Who's we?
The region. Let's say, let's say we have to cooperate regionally. And what we have.
That's what I don't understand.
Well, what I'm saying is, if we want to say that we want to give up authority to a regional body or something, the question is, what's the deal? And you don't just say, I give up the authority and then we'll figure it out later. But I think we've seen a lot of examples where the inner bay versus the outer bay, the the high, the dense cities versus the suburbs, they have different perspectives and different objectives. And I think that a, what we're trying to achieve and how we're trying to do it, and who's the we, but it's whatever body you're trying to transfer your control to, that you have a discussion before you do it. That's all I'm saying. That's the first step. And not say, I'll give it up. I'll trust you. I don't know who I'm talking to. I don't know what you're trying to do, but hey, I'm good with whatever. That's all.
So one of the things that this platform, I see, I see customer Monroe's hand raised, but let me just make a point here that one of the things that this this platform does is, for example, occasionally there will be legislation proposed. Perhaps the California Cities is looking for a support letter. Well, what we do is we have a legislative platform and then without having to go to a council meeting, we can send a letter of support to support specific legislation. And that's what this platform does. When we go back to Washington DC, we articulate pieces of this platform as we have support positions for legislation. We can do this without having to go back to the council because this is a base framework that we can direct staff or letters of support from the city of Livermore. Any major issue will come back to the city council. But this is just a platform from which we can have staff support, have supports positions without bringing it back to the council for every issue. So these are general global sorts of of issues and not not specific. So with that, Councilmember Monroe.
Thanks. So I I I think we're getting a little sidetracked by the by the wording and the process. So my objection to local control as language is that it's not helpful to actually solving the problem. What it does is it and the problem is, where is it that we get control over development in the city? Where do we get the funds for that? Where is money taken from us appropriately or inappropriately? Where is money given to us inappropriately or appropriately? One of the phrase that kept coming back throughout the document was unfunded mandate, unfunded mandate. This is actually a huge concern. This happens all the time. I know that earlier today, we were talking about money around homelessness, where money is maybe being taken from the whole city and not give the whole county and not distributed in ways that might be what we might consider fair. This isn't a matter of local control. This is a matter of, I mean, saying the words local control doesn't actually help in that situation or any of these situations. What helps is saying this is what we need and this is why we need it. This is, and and that's all I'm I'm saying. Yeah, another situation, K, having to do with MT CNA bad, where the rules applied within that organization were going to affect Livermore very negatively. This was back in before COVID. And that required going out and talking to MT CNA bag. Again, local control wasn't the issue. It was, this is not a matter that works for Livermore. What we need and then explaining what the situation is. So I I'm just, I would just like to make sure that what we that was weird. Your picture, John went in and out, it was odd.
It just went dark.
It was very strange. Sorry. So it's not, I I absolutely agree that the process is what matters. I have no intention of giving up anything that Livermore needs that makes us good as a city, particularly within the region. I'm just saying, I want to make sure that we understand what local control means and what it doesn't mean, and maybe use it other frames.
Well, for example, we just recently were looking at state legislation that was going to require the city of Livermore putting eight story apartment buildings next to a bus stop. And so with that, we didn't have to come back to the council to draft letters in opposition. Staff understood where the city's position was. That was something that was being forced upon the city. It was not allowing local control of our own zoning. So that platform, the legislative platform, gave us the ability to immediately respond without having to go to the council and say, should we take a position on this? We already had that position that having eight story buildings next to a bus stop was not in the city's best interest. It did come down to having that local control over our zoning. So that's one of the reasons why this legislative platform is helpful. We can always amend these things, but it enables us to take quick action when it's needed. And that was where it was needed. Okay, any any further comments? Okay, with that, we've had the public hearing. I would entertain a motion.
I would move, but was it move what we have and then but come back with that value statement or what?
That works for me. Steph, you could do you have sufficient direction?
Yeah, if we, if the motion was indeed to adopt the platform as it is written with direction to bring back a overarching statement for future council consideration. Yes, we understand what that means.
Perfectly worded.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion made by Councilmember Monroe, seconded by Vice Mayor Warner. Any discussion on the, any discussion on the motion? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Carling?
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer?
Hi.
Councilmember Monroe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Warner?
Hi.
Mayor Marshon?
Hi. And just, let me say, I certainly appreciate the discussion on this and I appreciate the comments from Mr. Barker, Mr. Dunbar. And these are things that we deal with every single day, and I certainly appreciate their perspective. And look forward to staff bringing back some additional comments for that. So thank you all. I think it's a very good discussion to have.
Honorable Mayor?
Yes.
One additional question, in addition to the overall statement that your discussion informed, would you like us also to bring back a draft point dealing with state and federal legislation, supporting legislation that would expand access to information, communicate and communications technology?
I believe that was the intent of the of the motion. Councilmember Monroe, she's nodding yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so that is correct. And the second for the motion, do you agree, Vice Mayor?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, City Manager, for for refining that point. Okay, we're just about, well, I guess we're beginning. Oh, moving to six point oh four, the extension of the Exclusive Negotiating Rights Agreement with Livermore Shakespeare Associates.
Honorable Mayor, it's your city manager, Mark Roberts, and I'm going to introduce your deputy city manager, Christine Martin, who will give the staff report related to this item.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. Good evening again, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Christine Martin, your deputy city manager. By way of background, in January of 2018, the city council approved the downtown plan, which included various elements such as Stockman's Park and location of new retail commercial buildings, two cultural and two cultural facilities, including a Black Box Theater and a Science and Society Center. In June of 2018, after reviewing responses to the city's RFQ, council directed staff to enter into exclusive negotiating rights agreements with Quest Science Center for the Science and Society Center and Shakespeare's Associates for the development of the Black Box Theater. In July, July 24, 2018, the city did enter into that exclusive negotiating rights agreement with Shakespeare Associates. And council subsequently extended that exclusive negotiating rights agreement on both May 13, 2019, and January 13 of this year, 2020. While substantial progress has been made on the Black Box Theater negotiations, activation of the city's Emergency Operations Center to address the COVID-19 pandemic has led to delays. Therefore, staff is requesting an extension of the Exclusive Negotiating Rights Agreement to December 31 of this year to allow sufficient time to complete the necessary steps for approval of the Black Box Theater disposition and development agreement. Staff is recommending that city council adopt the resolution authorizing the Exclusive Negotiating Rights Agreement extension with Shakespeare Associates again to December 31 of 2020. And staff is available for any questions you may have.
Questions for staff, members of the council? Okay, with that, I'm going to open the public comment period. Do you have any public comment, Madam City Clerk?
We have received public comment over Google Forms and over Zoom, City Clerk's office. Can you please read those comments?
From the Google Form, we have Sandy Gomes, yes. And from Evan Branning, because of COVID, the uncertain times, I hope the city will see fit to allow additional time for raising funds. No one foresaw this when the agreements were approved. And so long as it does not delay the whole project, they should be allowed sufficient time to raise the funds needed. Excuse me, raise the needed funds. And from from Zoom, from Carl Wentie, fully support. Shakespeare Association is an awesome organization that greatly benefits our community.
That's all the public comments we were we received.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Bringing it back to the city council. Comments?
Well, this is Bob Coomer. I couldn't agree more. I think we need to extend it. Given these extraordinary circumstances, I just don't want this to fall to the crack somewhere. So let's find him a little more time.
Thank you, Councilmember Coomer. They they're a wonderful resource for the community and certainly appreciate their participation in this class, in the schools as well. The So Why So Young program is a remarkable opportunity for the children to learn about Shakespeare. Councilmember Monroe?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the extension.
Okay, Councilmember Carling?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Motion made by Councilmember Monroe, seconded by Councilmember Carling. Vice Mayor Warner, your hand is raised?
Oh, for when you asked for comments?
Oh, yes. Please.
Oh, I I think it's the right thing to do. And I think the attitude of the city going forward is we need to learn everything we can and recover from the pandemic. And what we need to do is encourage organizations to survive and thrive. And it's just very straightforward that we acknowledge the the time limits have got to be moved out in a reasonable way.
Very good. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do any further discussion on the motion? Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Carling?
Bye.
Councilmember Coomer?
Hi.
Councilmember Monroe?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner?
Hi.
Mayor Marshon?
Hi. Okay, looking at the next item is adopting resolutions and related documents regarding certificates of participation. Does anybody want to take a five minute break at this point, or do you want to just soldier on? You just raise your hands if you want to take a break now, or we can just keep moving. Okay, looks like we keep moving. Very good. This is going to six point oh five, Mr. Alessio.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm going to share my screen and PowerPoint. Give me just a moment. All right. Hopefully you all can see my PowerPoint on the screen, I believe.
Yes.
All right. All right. So the item this evening is a proposed refinancing of some of the city's certificates of participation. And given the favorable conditions in the taxes and municipal market and historically low interest rate environment. low interest rate environment, the city has been monitoring fixed rate refunding opportunities associated with three outstanding series of certificates of participation. The proposed offering of the City of Livermore refunding certificates of participation, Series 2020A and 2020B, aim to capture the favorable interest rate environment and achieve an important financial and debt management objectives of the city, which include reduced annual lease payments and to secure budgetary savings related specifically to the outstanding 2011 certificates and eliminate risks and budgetary uncertainty associated with the variable rate interest presented by the 2014 Series A and B. And lastly, to advance the city's debt policy of pursuing debt service savings when supported by market conditions and ensuring prudent long-term debt structures through fixed level annual debt service schedules. So what does all that mean? We're proposing to refinance two of the city's existing piece of debt, the 2011 certificates of participation. These were originally issued in June of 2011 with a face value of almost seventeen and a half million dollars. They mature in 2042. They are fixed rate instrument. The bonds paid anywhere from three percent to five and a quarter percent, depending on the length of maturity which you may have purchased. The current outstanding balance is almost fifteen million dollars, and the proceeds of these certificates of participation were used to build the new airport administration building and is gap funding for the outlet mall, the El Charo specific plan area. So specifically, the extension of Jack London Boulevard in the El Charo specific area storm drain facilities. The other pieces of debt that we're looking to refinance are the 2014 certificates of participation, Series A. This is Livermore Valley Performing Arts Center refunding. It was issued in October of fourteen for a little more than nine million. These are variable rate demand obligations. They're currently a daily interest rate reset. That occurred in 2017, when these were originally issued. In 2014, they were a weekly interest rate reset. The current outstanding amount due is almost nine million, and these will be repaid fully in 2042. Again, the host community impact fee is a primary repayment source in this. The proceeds were used to purchase the bankhead theater. All right, the 2014 certificates, Series B, were issued in October of 2014 with a value of forty-nine million seven hundred and twenty thousand. Again, these are variable rate obligations. When they're originally issued in fourteen, they were a weekly interest rate. When the letter of credit that supports them expired in 2017, we switched to a daily rate and saved a little bit more money. The outstanding balance is about thirty-eight and a half million, and these are final payments would come due in 2031. And the proceeds from these were used to refund the 2008 certificate of participation. So after refunding those, we'll end up with the 2020 certificates of participation, Series A and B. These will be issued in, in and around June of 2020 for approximately fifty-five million. This is proposed to be a fixed rate financing. Series A would be for the bankhead portion only, and it would have a final maturity of 2042. Series B would be a combination of the 2014B and the 2011 COPs with a final maturity of 2041. The refinancing doesn't contemplate stretching our debt out. The original maturity for the bankhead portion was 2042, and the original maturity for the 2011 COP was 2041. A significant portion of the debt will be repaid in 2031, and that's the, the piece associated with the 2014 COP, Series B. After 2031, the outstanding balance will be about eight million, and it'll drop significantly. We expect a pretty good economic savings on the 2011 COP. When we issued that, interest rates were much higher. We suspected we'll have a fairly significant economic gain on that, estimated at over three hundred thousand dollars a year in interest rate savings. The other reason to do this is to lock in stability with historically low interest rates. That benefits both the city's long-term planning. We suspect over the life of this debt, interest rates will only climb, so we'll end up having interest rate savings. And in order to keep it as a variable rate debt, we would have needed to replace the letter of credit. Variable rate debt requires letter of credit that expires every three years, and so we get to avoid costs associated with switching out a letter of credit every three years. So as overall whole, we suspect switching this to a fixed rate debt will save the city quite a bit of money over the term of the debt. The, the documents you're being asked to approve tonight, there's a long list of them. There is a site lease, which, excuse me, under the site lease, the city leases certain assets to the Public Property Financing Corporation of California. The corporation is a nonprofit corporation established to provide assistance to public agencies with lease financings and to facilitate lease financing. We'll also be approving as to form a lease agreement pursuant to lease agreement, the corporation will sublease the assets leased to it under the site lease back to the city. The city will comment that the lease agreement to budget in appropriate scheduled payments on an annual basis. If the city fails to make the scheduled payments, the trustees for the 2020 certificates could sue the city to, to force us to make the lease payments or take possession and then relet the leased assets. We would also be approving a trust agreement and assignment agreement. Under the assignment agreement, the corporation will assign to the trustee the right to receive lease payments that are payable by the city under the lease agreement. And under the trust agreement, the trustee will execute and deliver the 2020 certificates, which represent interests in the city's lease payments. You'll also be asked to approve the 2011 escrow agreement. So the 2011 certificates of participation were financed with something called the Livermore Capital Projects Financing Authority. That's why this agenda tonight, you're acting as the City Council and as the commission of the Livermore Capital Projects Financing Authority. That was a financing authority in place at the time. It was a JPA between the city and the redevelopment agency, and it's now defunct. And you, you would need to approve this escrow agreement so that Union Bank, the trustee for the certificates, could apply a portion of the proceeds from the 2020B certificates to repay the 2011 certificates. You'd also be approving as to form the 2014 reimbursement instructions and also the preliminary official statement. The official statement is primarily a disclosure document and marketing document, which would be used to help when it comes to the sale of the certificates. You'd also be approving a continuing disclosure certificate and in notice of sale. And that is what I have for you this evening. If you had any questions, I'll try to answer them. If, if they're legal in nature, we have Chris Lynch from Jones Hall, who is the bond counsel available, and we also have Melissa Schick from KNN, who's acting as a financial advisor on this deal, available for any questions that I might not be able to answer.
Very good, thank you very much. Do we have any questions from the council at this point?
Just a comment from me. I just pleased that we're taking advantage of the lower interest rates and moving forward with all this. It's, it's kind of reassuring and relaxing to see that this is happening. This is great work, Doug.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Warner.
Yeah, first question, do we have a public comment on this?
I figured I'd just ask questions first, and then if there's no questions, we'll open up a public comment. Is there any public comment?
Mayor, there's, oh, I'm sorry, we just received one on Zoom from Carl Wentie. I appreciate the City Council, Mark Roberts, Doug Alessio, and the entire staff of the City of Livermore. The magnitude of work that grows, that goes into prudent civic governance continues to astound me. You all are awesome. Thank you to all, to all for your continued fiscal responsibility. Hashtag tropical island, that doesn't need to be tropical. That is all the public comment we have received.
Okay, okay, Vice Mayor Warner again.
Oh, I, I just wanted to thank Doug and his team for an incredible amount of work. I mean, they just, it was, you know, pretty extensive, just listing all the documents, but going through that and making them all good, it's incredible. Finally, so thank you very much, Doug and your, your team. My only question is, how come you didn't get negative interest on these?
It's not like the oil companies, right?
Well, you know, we won't actually know the interest rate we get until it's time to sell them.
Right. Well, very good, we have no, no further public comments, closed public comment period. Councilmember Monroe, your hand is raised.
First of all, I, I also want to compliment Mr. Alessio and his team for doing an amazing job. It's really wonderful to see that, this is, this just sounds terrible. The, the fact that this is possible in today's environment is sort of a sign of today's environment, but I am glad that we are going to, as a city, be able to move forward with this. So I, I appreciate that a lot. And then I just had one, I, I'm desperate to know what hashtag.
You know what?
Ha- hashtag tropical island, whatever it is that.
Oh, oh, that's probably.
Just let it, let it go, let it.
Okay, very good. All right, any further questions or comments from the council? Okay, we'll need two motions on this. We'll need one for the A and B, the adopting the resolution, approving the forms and authorizing the execution and delivery of the lease, lease agreement, trust agreement, et cetera, the grant to the city council, to the city manager and the administrative services director, the authority to amend and execute documents. So I will need a, a motion for, for those two elements.
I'll move approval.
Okay, move by Councilmember Carling. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Warner. Any discussion on the motion? Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Carling.
Bye.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner. Vice Mayor Warner.
Oh, hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Okay, now I'll need a motion to adopt the, this, this is in acting as the Livermore Capital Projects Financing Authority to adopt the Livermore Capital Projects Financing Authority Resolution approving the execution of the 2011 escrow agreement, et cetera. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Move by Councilmember Monroe.
And I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Coomer. Any discussion on the motion? Madam City Clerk.
Commissioner Carling.
Hi.
Commissioner Coomer.
Hi.
Commissioner Monroe.
Hi.
Vice Chairperson Warner.
Hi.
Chairperson Marshawn.
Hi. Asked unanimously. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to six point oh six, this is a resolution authorizing a six-month delay in the implementation of the water rates for 2020, 2021.
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your City Manager. As you know, the City Council has taken several steps to address the recent crisis in delaying or foregoing penalties, interests on certain items that are due to the city, on delaying increases to certain infrastructure that the city has control over, where we charge rate payers, rates to provide those services. And in this particular case, this item is dealing with your water utility. And to describe the staff presentation, we have a management analyst, Anthony Smith, here to provide you the staff report for this particular item to push a rate increase off six months to align with the other items you have done for your utilities. Anthony?
Thank you, Mark. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Again, I'm Anthony Smith, an analyst in the Public Works Department. In June of 2017, the City Council approved a schedule of five years of water rates for fiscal years 2018 through 2022. The first year of this rate period included an equity adjustment in order to ensure that each class of customers paid their fair share. After that initial year, the annual adjustments that were approved ensure that the city's municipal water distribution system is sustainably funded. Rates approved for fiscal year 2021 are scheduled to increase on July 1st. In light of the financial hardships caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, staff recommends that the city delay implementation of increased rates until January 1st, 2021. Assuming similar water use patterns, delaying the implementation of the previously approved water rates will result in a reduction in revenues of approximately three hundred thousand dollars. With this reduction, the Water Enterprise Fund will continue to meet both targeted operational and capital reserve levels. Tonight, staff recommends that the council adopt a resolution authorizing a six-month delay in the implementation of water rates for fiscal year 2021 until January 1st, 2021. Staff are available for questions, thank you.
Okay, any questions for staff at this point? Okay, let's open the public hearing. Do we have any public comments?
We have received public comment via Google Forms, City Clerk's Office. Will you please read those comments?
From Connie Naylor, I agree. Ian Like, I support easing the financial burden shared by many high-water usage companies such as Livermore Wineries and Breweries. Holly Landrum, I approve. Dean Mancini, I'm in favor of a one-year delay, six months is not enough. Karen Roland, yes, I support this. Jeannie Harvey, I support. Lisa Hensley Goldstein, yes, and Cheryl Pho, delay. And nothing on Zoom.
That concludes all the public comments we have received.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. Is there any further comment by the council or entertain a motion?
I'll move, we accept staff recommendation.
And I'll second that.
Councilmember Carling makes the motion, Councilmember Coomer seconds the motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? Moving on to Madam City Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer.
Hi.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number six point oh seven, this is discussion in the direction for the downtown.
Before we start that, could, could we please take a break? It is past nine, and my computer is almost out of juice.
Okay, we can take a quick break. We only have one more item, but I will go ahead and if the council wishes to take a break, go ahead and raise your hands. Okay, we got, all right, all right, okay, let's take, let's take a five-minute break and come back here about ten after. We'll see you guys in a few. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, just let us TV 30 know when you're ready, and we'll catch back in.
Okay, sounds good.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir.
All right, uh, let's see, can TB 30 hear me?
Yes, sir, you ready to go?
I think we're ready to go. Everybody back on, uh, on track here. I see everybody's video coming up. All right, we're good. Let's, uh, let's roll.
Here we go. In three, two, one, we're live.
Good evening and welcome back to, uh, round two of the Livermore City Council for May the 11th. Uh, we just can, uh, finished six point oh six, we're moving on to six point oh seven, which is the consideration of the downtown. Open this up to, uh, uh, open for staff and then on to the, uh, council.
Honorable Mayor, uh, and members of the council. Again, this is your city manager, Mark Roberts. Um, we wanted to bring this item to you, uh, because we, uh, want to make sure that our response, uh, to the COVID-19 crisis is as effective and efficient as possible. Um, as you know, um, the city has taken a number of actions under its control, um, to ease the burden on local residents and local businesses. However, um, just, uh, like the local businesses and local residents, um, our, um, resources are under stress as well. So ultimately, um, to get out of this crisis, the most effective way to make progress is to make sure that the businesses that, uh, fuel and support the community can get back on their feet as quickly and efficiently as possible. And this is where the city, um, can take a lead role in making sure that all of the normal regulatory barriers that would stand in the way of doing something unique, um, can be moved out of the way. The item before you this evening is a discussion item, uh, where your staff has been examining options, um, that would pertain, uh, first to the downtown about being able to expand businesses outside. Um, as we know, um, the risk of transmission in the outdoors is greatly reduced as opposed to indoors in tightly packed areas. Um, we expect, uh, the state and then ultimately the county will give guidance to allow the reopening of, uh, certain retail and restaurant businesses over time. Um, but those businesses won't be reopening in their current format, at least not initially. And, uh, many of them have expressed a desire to expand their operations outside. Um, that involves a number of regulations, uh, a, a number of, uh, items to consider, and also the fact that, uh, the various businesses throughout the community have different needs. Um, and in particular in downtown, uh, businesses that are side by side, uh, can have very different needs as to what ultimately, uh, is most helpful to help them reopen and get their feet back under them. So this evening, um, we have a presentation, uh, from, uh, Adam Van De Water, your Director of Innovation and Economic Development, and Bob Vin, your Assistant City Engineer, um, that have spent quite a bit of time, uh, working, uh, with both staff inside the city, um, and merchants and restaurateurs downtown and throughout the community as well as your downtown organization. Um, and, uh, we have a presentation for you outlining essentially what, uh, we think would, uh, help, uh, get us on the path to recovery with our local businesses. Of course, we know that we can't open those businesses right now because of, one of the things that is your local government, we can't do is we don't ultimately, um, dictate of when our health officer, which is at the county level, or our governor, which is the health officer for the entire state, will ultimately permit us to move forward. What we want to make sure is that when those, uh, agencies, however, do grant us permission to move forward, that we can do that efficiently and effectively. Um, and then we're also going to, uh, provide some information to you tonight about, um, some of the things that we want to do as far as unusual flexibility, both for the individual businesses and for your staff, um, to be able to make changes based on the changing circumstances that we expect. The one thing that we've kind of gotten used to is having, uh, the rules change out from under us, sometimes, uh, by the month, sometimes by the week, and sometimes even in the same day. Um, so you granting us some authority, um, to be able to solve those problems in real time would be appreciated as well. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Adam Van De Water, your Director of Innovation and Economic Development, who's going to start us, uh, through our presentation.
Thank you, Mark. Again, Adam Van Water, your Director of Innovation and Economic Development. I will be sharing my screen. Give me one second here. And let me know if this is coming up for you. There we go. And it's spinning on my end, but, uh, we're excited to be here tonight to start talking about, uh, the next phase of our return from the shelter in place. Uh, we have been here, uh, starting week nine of shelter in place under the county, uh, order. And, uh, the governor has recently announced that we are, uh, entering in other parts of the state with, 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 uh, excuse me, with, uh, lower incidence, the second stage in their California resilience roadmap. So, um, what you see here is, uh, some images from downtown. We're hoping to, uh, safely populate with some of our residents, uh, as we gradually phase their reentry. I'll walk through a little bit of our discussions in the recent weeks with downtown retailers and restaurateurs before turning it over to our Assistant City Engineer, Bob Vin, to talk about some of the circulation, pedestrian safety and traffic considerations. So as we do that, um, let's take a quick, uh, look back at the timeline. The Alameda County Shelter in Place order was issued on March 16th, uh, March 16th, eight weeks ago today, which closed or restricted most retail stores and restaurants, and the state of California followed that order. Last Friday, the state began easing restrictions for curbside pickup, uh, and designated retail, um, in counties outside of the urban areas that still have, uh, high incidences of positive, uh, cases. And is expected later this week to announce rules for, uh, the same for restaurants. As your city manager mentioned, the concern is largely, uh, congregations of crowds, um, both in tight quarters and in, uh, uh, close contact and for long periods of time. Um, and so our restaurants and retail, uh, are in, very much interested in, uh, reopening, um, and to do so both interior and when able to do so and exterior. Um, as we've talked to folks in anticipation of those easing restrictions, um, we've made a number of assumptions. Uh, we are not in control of those details, though we are working with our county and state partners. Um, and we assume that that reopening will be phased and that there will be interior social distancing measurement, measures, uh, required with variations by business, just as the state has done elsewhere. So tonight, we are responding to your direction to explore temporary downtown reconfigurations to support our merchants and facilitate a flexible, uh, return as the shelter in place restrictions are lifted. As we do so, we want to, uh, keep in mind a number of goals and objectives. First of all, uh, public health and safety is paramount, and that, uh, it means a number of things. That's both compliance with state and county public health orders. Um, that is clear and understandable direction to our community. Uh, but it's also, uh, safety outside of the county pub, public health orders, pedestrian safety, traffic circulation, uh, safe business operations. Uh, as we approach this, we really want to make sure we design this to meet our merchants' needs. Uh, our merchants' needs, as you'll see, vary, uh, depending on the type of operation. Uh, and we want to make sure whatever we do, uh, it helps them, uh, continue to survive as businesses through this challenging time. Given the changing nature of the, uh, situation we're in, we want to design any solution to be responsive. It should be flexible, uh, adaptive. We should be able to, as staff, iterate to, to, uh, keep up with those changing conditions, be able to move quickly and at relatively low cost and identify some solutions while we're talking about downtown here this evening that are also applicable citywide. We have restaurants and retail operations throughout our community, um, and they'll have some of the same needs as downtown. Uh, but downtown, uh, is an area where we can focus, uh, the conversation to identify those needs. Um, in conversations with, uh, our business community, our Vice Mayor Warner, uh, city staff and Livermore Downtown, Inc., met with our downtown merchants in two separate Zoom calls, uh, with our restaurant community on April 29th and our retail community on May 8th. And then we followed that with a online survey asking detailed information on what they think would help them survive this transition period. Uh, and we had 28 restaurateurs and 13 retailers for a total of 41, uh, complete that survey. In general, the merchants are, uh, looking forward to a safe return to commerce and anticipate a number of keys to success in doing so. Uh, access to delivery and pickup, increased community vis- visibility and access to their customers. ABC or alcohol beverage and control flexibility, and this is a reference to, uh, statewide changes allowing them to serve to-go beverages along with food, um, which, uh, allows them flexibility, uh, to, to weather this period. And again, and of course additional outdoor space, both for restaurant seating and, uh, for, uh, retail commerce as well. The responses varied greatly by the individual businesses, um, by business type and by location. And I wanted to share a little bit of that detail from the survey and from those two Zoom, Zoom calls. For bars and restaurants, of those 28 survey respondents, half prioritized outdoor seating, as their primary, uh, key to success, that, um, they've been surviving on takeout. But they really want to provide that experience that, uh, their customers have come to love about our downtown, um, and need additional seating to safely accommodate that. 10 of the restaurants prioritized curbside access for takeout and delivery and anticipate that takeout and delivery will remain important to them even after uh, a phased return from our shelter in place. Um, of those seeking the additional outdoor seating, that roughly half of restaurant respondents, um, that they would look, like to create that space either within their own leased space on their patio, uh, uh, in their leased premises or, uh, along the, um, public sidewalk or the diagonal parking close to their kitchen where they can serve, um, with, with their food and beverage. 15 of the respondents, uh, as I mentioned, expect to rely on takeout for between 30 and 90% of their business, with 11 seeking an adjacent short-term duration, uh, takeout and delivery parking. For our retailers, uh, they indicate they would be at between a quarter and a half of normal capacity if they were required to, uh, maintain social distancing within their businesses. And, and we, uh, define that as the six-foot distancing we've become, uh, familiar with, within their businesses. Uh, so they would see a reduction in the capacity. Their primary concern is curbside pickup, customer access and visibility. Um, three saw additional outdoor retail space, uh, and four would consider it, uh, outside their front entrance. But there was, uh, some discussion on our Zoom call, uh, and a desire for an outdoor market when safe to do so. Our farmer's market, uh, will be returning with essential, uh, food items, um, very shortly, and their desire was to either expand upon the farmer's market footprint or to do a dedicated market where they can do their wares, um, to the public safely outdoors where, as your city manager mentioned, uh, the circulatory air creates a safer environment. Um, in their own words, I won't read every word here, but I wanted you to hear this directly from some of our, uh, local businesses. They are very much looking forward to flexibility. They too look forward to, uh, a little uncertainty uh, in how we respond to this, which, um, is entirely dependent on our, our collective response to our shelter in place and how we roll out testing and the healthcare response, uh, and hoping we can create an atmosphere that drives business and creates a safe environment downtown. Um, there were a number of comments that make sure we consider all restaurants and bars, not just First Street, uh, that we think of those on second, on third, on railroad and in our outer lying communities, uh, our neighborhoods as well. And then the next two were, were sort of variations, different views on the same idea. We need to get our customers returning to the downtown. If it becomes a walking district, people will have the space necessary to spread out, enjoy the synergy of all of our downtown businesses. Uh, but others were afraid that the perception that First Street was closed will really deter shoppers from coming downtown and hoping to practice social distancing without closing the streets. Again, you see, uh, reference to alcohol beverage control, uh, flexibility, uh, takeout, um, for some, uh, they see this as being important going forward. Others have used it as a stopgap as one of the few that they are allowed to continue with, uh, but really looking for seats, um, and the experience and total check, uh, values that go with that. Retailer asking about traffic visibility, having a beautiful downtown without cars would mean more business, expand restaurants and bring more customers to town. Um, and then finally, parking downtown is always an issue, and I would hate for it to become even more so. Uh, so, uh, a few, uh, different ideas depending on the retailer. We heard from large and small restaurants and, uh, different types of retailers, um, all looking forward to, uh, welcoming customers back to downtown safely, um, and appreciating the ca- council and staff's direction to plan ahead, um, as we anticipate those changes in shelter in place. So, um, next I want to turn it to our Assistant City Engineer, Bob Vin, to walk through the traffic and parking considerations and, uh, get you towards a discussion around a citywide recommendation.
Got decreased since, uh, before COVID where we had fully utilized parking in the core during the peak hours and key intersections. Were, uh, showing levels of congestion. Um, what, the restaurants at that time pri- primarily provided indoor service. Uh, and we had limited demand for outdoor dining in the flex zone. We currently have, um, applications for five flex zones. I believe those are two parking spots each, so that's about 10 parking spots out of our supply of 100 in, on First Street in the downtown. So, uh, now the parking occupancy is less than half, approaching a quarter of its capacity. Uh, and the volumes are at half or less of, uh, what they were before COVID. Now, it, it varies by block. The parking, for example, on J and K streets are, are a little bit higher than 50%. And other places, the parking is, uh, pretty low. And other places, the parking is pretty low. Parts of the Livermore Village lot, we also looked at, has lots of extra spaces. And as you heard, the restaurants and retail now are dependent on curbside and takeout, and there's much more demand for outdoor dining in the flex zone and other places. Next slide, please. Well, as we wait for...
My apologies.
There we go. Thank you, Adam. So we looked at a bunch of different strategies that we could employ, including closing a number of streets in the downtown. First Street, JK, McLeod, similar to what we do with some of the festivals. We also looked at whether First Street could be reduced by one lane and have one-way flow to provide a little more room. We looked at the effect changing parking time limits might have on occupancy, and that's a strategy we want to deploy. And of course, expanding outdoor dining areas into the flex zones, the streets, and the parking lot behind First Street businesses, as well as hardscape areas in the plazas and sidewalk where there's room. Next slide, please. So there's some issues as we move forward. We need to make sure we're conscious of the safety issues Adam talked about and balancing the varying needs of different merchants. I think we didn't hear a clear consensus to make a pedestrian mall permanent for a long period of time. So we have a slightly different strategy we're recommending on that issue. We also have to be mindful of ADA requirements, the impact of any strategy on city assets, operations, and how quickly we can deploy what materials we have on hand and what it might cost, and how quickly we can purchase additional materials that we might need. Next slide, please. So our recommended strategies are to expand outdoor dining within the existing flex zones. So right now, we have 10 flex zone spaces that could be occupied. We have a quarter to a half of the 100 spaces needed for parking, at least today. So there's lots of extra unused parking spaces in the flex zones that could be used for outdoor dining. So we recommend that we implement this on a case-by-case basis through an application process at the Community Development Department, similar to the existing flex zone application. It would be a no-fee application, and that would give staff the opportunity to see exactly who is requesting how much space and where it's located, where we can expand, and we can go look at whether it's, there's room on the sidewalks, in the flex zone or behind in the parking lot for each individual request. And then a second strategy is to maintain a balance on First Street between the space needed for curbside pickup and the outdoor dining, because as we saw in the survey, there was a lot of interest in space for curbside pickup. And then finally, through all this, we need to monitor and we need to be flexible. If we find that the occupancy is filling up on First Street, we will reduce time limits to promote faster turnover. Next slide, please. Oops. So finally, we would like to evaluate applying these strategies into private parking lots. So far, we're talking about the public realm. Some of the issues in the private lots are also some of the similar issues like ADA access. So some private lots may be more conducive to these strategies than others, but we'll be taking a look at that. We'd like to expand this concept to other commercial districts beyond the downtown core and throughout the city. We would like to continue outreach efforts to the public and to the merchants. And we will explore making pedestrian malls by closing streets on a limited and periodic basis. So for example, maybe on a Friday night, we close off First Street between Livermore Avenue and Maple. And we have some outdoor dining, perhaps there's entertainment if that's allowed by the rules. The retailers perhaps can have some outdoor sales and try to meet the needs that we heard in the survey. And then again, we need to be flexible and continue to adjust as the rules change and the merchants' needs change. Next slide, please. So that concludes staff's recommendations and presentation.
Thank you, Bob and Adam. Again, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager. So Honorable Mayor, Council members, you heard basically our overall strategy there. I did want to acknowledge that we are looking for your overall general direction this evening. As you heard, we have a strategy that we've laid out that involves many moving parts. Fundamental to it is working and individually tailoring these solutions to meet the needs of the adjacent merchant or retailer. And you've heard, of course, that those vary by merchant, by retailer, by restaurant, that different options are best for different folks in there. The overall strategy includes waiving fees for any necessary permits, including refunding those that were previously applied for, for those who applied for using the flex zone and had the normal permit fees already paid, adjusting rules on public property, adjusting rules on private property, creating special or time-limited events, working with other regulatory agencies, including the ABC, allowing greater flexibility to change, to address evolving circumstances. So the great news is regulatorily, you have confirmed me as your Director of Emergency Services. And during the term of the emergency, I have the ability to implement these changes on a tactical and administrative level. So what we'd like to have from you this evening is your concurrence in your general direction this evening. The direction we're heading in is the one that you would like us to head in, provide any adjustments or changes to that general direction. And then we will continue to check back in, giving you updates on essentially, once we're opening up, how it's working, as well as when we make changes. We do expect to have to change whatever strategy we have several times as the rules change, as your staff noted earlier. So with that, I'd like to wrap up our staff presentation and turn it back over to you, Honorable Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much. Some really, really cool ideas. Very exciting. So with that, are there any questions at this point before I open up the public comment period? Councilmember Carley?
Yeah, I don't, thanks for the report, but I don't know what a flex zone is. Can you define what a flex zone is?
So that's a term of art that when we redid the downtown, the area along First Street that has special paving material in the diagonal parking area was created to be used in three different formats. One is as a parking area. The second is essentially utilizing essentially half of the area as a retail or dining area. And the third was to create the entire area of the parking space to be used as a retail and outdoor dining area. The only two formats that have ever been used is either the completely parking option or the completely outdoor dining option. We've never had anyone doing retail activities in that same area. But that area, because it was created with a unique paving material, a two-step curb area, it was always envisioned to be a mixture of parking during some times of the year and in some circumstances, and outdoor retail or dining areas, unlike other areas in your downtown, which have been set aside only for parking.
So what I understood was there's 100 of these spaces and we're only using 10 now. Is that what I heard?
Bob?
That's correct.
Essentially, what that means is that your parking, if you've been in your downtown, obviously recently, we all know that very few of these spaces are being used for parking. During a normal year, as we noted, we have between three and seven restaurants that like to use the parking spaces for outdoor dining. As you heard, we have five applications this year, pre-COVID. But what we're hearing from the overall group in downtown is that virtually everyone wants to make sure that that area, that area used for parking, you know, can be used to help them essentially reopen their business, whether that be a drop-off and pickup spot or a outdoor dining area.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So no further questions by the council. I'm going to open up the public comment period. Ms. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. We received 290 public comments earlier today that have been provided to the council and on the website and sent out to the public. In addition to that, we have received no public comments over YouTube or Zoom at the current time. And the City Clerk's office is prepared to read the 290 comments if you'd like.
Well, okay, so all of us have received the comments. There were 58 pages of comments. And per the new rules, we've... We don't need to have them all read because all of us have the comments. The city council members have had the opportunity to view those. They're also in the public record, they're on the website, and as you mentioned, part of the public record. So with that, I will close the public comment period. But I will mention there were several overriding comments that came in through the comments. One, there was overwhelming support for the temporary closure of First Street. A lot of folks highlighted there was temporary closure because they recognized the importance of helping the businesses come out of the post-COVID-19 period. They spoke, a number of people spoke to the enhanced cycling access and a walking zone that could be utilized to bring people into the downtown. One of the caveats is people were saying that they wanted this to be a permanent closure. There were some folks that wanted permanent. Folks felt that this would bring greater access into downtown. However, there were also people that said that if they couldn't park in front of a store or in front of a restaurant, then they would not patronize it. So you've got this balance that needs to be ensured. The, a couple of folks suggested removing the big buttons, as they called it, from the downtown. Those are the buttons that you have to press to cross the street. Now, I've noticed we had a couple of different ones. You've got the big ones that you can hit with your elbow, and the little ones, a little shield over the top that you really kind of have to use your thumb. So I know that we've had some city staff downtown wiping the buttons with alcohol to limit cross-contamination, but that's something for consideration as we look at the downtown to remove the small buttons and go to the big buttons. The very interesting comment was there are residents who live in the downtown, who live on First Street. And there was the question about providing dedicated parking for folks that live in the apartments above some of the First Street establishments. So that might be another consideration that people would like to see addressed as we look at multiple configurations of what we're going to be doing in the downtown. So also ADA parking was very important so that as we reduce the parking in the downtown for these flex zones, that we maintain some ADA parking to ensure that there's access for everybody. So that's a quick encapsulation of the 58 pages and the 300 comments. Are there any other points that the council members would like to speak to at this point? Councilmember Monroe?
Yeah, there were quite a number that were interested in expanding the biking area. The biking, biking as another means of transportation, that this is an opportunity to get those bike lanes going, particularly along L and up First Street. But also in other areas, East Avenue, I just, you know, around. One of the things I really appreciated, I'm sort of jumping into commenting on the presentation itself, but one of the things I appreciated was that it was, we can do this downtown, but also around town. And I think that the letters submitted around the bikes also were downtown-focused, but then spread out to the city as a whole.
Right. Thank you. Vice Mayor Warner?
I would want to say I appreciate all the comments and the details and the suggestions. But what I heard from the city manager and the others is that what we have to do at this point is be flexible and reasonably quick. And what is it that we can do to focus on bringing the merchants back? Some of these other ideas like biking could be a latter priority, but the question is, what are we going to do for the merchants? Because that's kind of the lifeblood of what we've got going here. And the other thing is that we've got a lot of options. And that we're not talking about a one-size-fits-all across all of First Street or all of downtown. And what we need to do at this stage is really find out from the merchants and the people that want to patronize them, the details on a per-block basis, and that we leave it to the city manager and the staff to figure out what works as quickly as possible so that we can meet their needs when the thing opens. And then we flex and we learn. So I think that thinking about a permanent this or that isn't what we're talking about at this point. It's really what works. And the other thing that I would suggest is that we keep an eye on what other communities are doing and really learn from them as well. And of course, each community has its own traffic pattern and their establishments. But let's make sure we're paying attention more broadly than our own area. And in particular, how are people meeting these safety rules? Because there might be one set that are articulated by the county health, but people are going to be innovative. So I think we just want to pay attention to what others are doing, direct staff to figure this problem out as quickly as possible specifically, and be prepared to flex as they suggest.
What I really appreciated was the fact that staff immediately went out and talked to the merchants, talked to the restaurants. Those are the people that are going to need the help and to find out what specifically they're going to need. And that the result was this is going to be flexible, it's going to be site-specific, no-fee permits, and it's going to be specifically crafted to the needs of businesses downtown. So I certainly appreciate the way that the staff went about this. See, the... Okay, Councilmember Carley?
I agree with Vice Mayor Warner. The only thing that I would, I guess, argue for a little sooner is bicycle safety. Having experienced a little problem yesterday downtown regarding bicycle safety and the fact that bicycle safety has been brought up to us numerous times over the last several years, and specifically bicycle safety downtown. I think it would be incumbent upon us to see what we could do to improve bicycle safety downtown. I mean, some of the suggestions that I think I read just involved painting lines on streets that currently don't have parking. And so it seems to me those would be pretty easy to implement, would show that we, as a body, care about bicycles and their safety. And we're trying to encourage more cycling and walking for exercise as much as anything. But I would not put off considering bicycle safety for some later time.
Thank you. Councilmember Monroe?
So I really appreciate the idea that this is... So I really appreciate the idea that this is flexible. This really does give us an opportunity to experiment. And knowing the city staff being as thorough as they are, I know that, you know, notes will be taken going forward. I also agree with, you know, obviously, since I brought it up about the bikes. There were a couple of other points in the comments that I think are not to this issue. And I'm suspicious that they should come up under a Matters Initiated. And that's the matter of the microloans or the loans or the ways that financially we can help. That would be a Matters Initiated, I assume? Mr. Roberts, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So then returning to this, the other question I would have is how broadly can we do the experimentation? I'm imagining East Avenue, which has, you know, been an issue for the city for quite a while. I also am thinking about the Springtown shopping areas. Well, both the one in the north, off of Vasco in North Livermore, and then the one near the Springtown Library, whether or not those could be incorporated. I'm just wondering how big of a ask this is in terms of going forward with, yeah.
So for retail activities throughout your city at all of your neighborhood shopping centers, these general rules could be applied. The general rules would follow a framework of an application from individual tenants or the owner of a shopping center, either of those, as long as there was permission from the shopping center itself. The flexibility around required parking, one of the things that normally would prohibit this sort of activity would be a minimum parking requirement that could be waived for a period of time during the emergency. The ability to do activities outdoors, which would traditionally be required to be indoors. For example, retail activities are normally held indoors and those could be outdoors. So the staff's intention is to apply these sorts of rules on private property as well as out into the public space. Again, with the same driving factors is to be safe, both from a health perspective and from a vehicle, pedestrian, and biking perspective on private property. And to be flexible and then to try and tailor this to individual areas, all the way from, you know, those who might have tasting rooms in some corners of the community to restaurants, to retailers, and in different corners of the community, there might be different needs. And that those needs might change over time with the health orders that change.
All right, Vice Mayor Warner?
I certainly agree with being cognizant of the bicycling needs and the question that Councilmember Monroe just brought up about what's the scope here? The concern I was trying to voice is we need to get something done for some of the critical areas. Now, if staff has the capability to do this for everywhere, then for sure. But I think what I was teeing up, and this is a question for the city manager, what is your capacity here? How many different things can you focus on simultaneously? Or is it all? Or do you need to have some priorities of what areas we target first?
The most complicated area that we are talking about is the downtown. And that's because the bulk of the activities will be happening in public rights of way, which essentially are streets and they're traditionally used for vehicle traffic. So that makes, you know, limiting access to parking areas, ADA spots, and circulation more complicated than doing a similar activity for a business, for example, that had their own private parking lot and simply wanted to rope off a portion of the spaces there. We do a similar check to make sure vehicle circulation still worked, emergency access still worked, and that circulation was safe. But that is a much lower intensity activity. So we would anticipate working on the activities down on First Street as a first priority and in parallel, being able to do some activities on private property in other areas of the community. Doing activities in the public realm, either in the greater downtown area or throughout the community, would take additional resources. And while I think we can make some progress on that, especially in concentrated areas, perhaps adjacent to downtown, where some of the changes we're making might create some opportunities. Those sorts of changes would take a little longer, not that we wouldn't place some resources toward that. But we would be primarily focusing on downtown retail and restaurants and essentially shopping center, retail, and restaurants as our very first priority and work from there.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for is some sense of what the priorities are, what kind of capacity you have, and in what order we do things. But the main danger that I've experienced over the years is, you know, what's referred to as scope creep. And you get the scope too fast, too big, too fast, and you don't get much of anything done.
Good. Thank you.
I'm literally raising my hand here because I don't have a hand-raising thing.
Okay, Councilmember Cooper?
Yeah, I'm just, concerned is a little too strong. But I just want to make sure that we're going to, whatever we provide, and this, I'm sure staff is way ahead of me here, that leaves enough open space for those of us in wheelchairs to get around downtown. It's going to be real important on the public sidewalk that we keep them clear. And I know with retailers trying to make up ground and restaurateurs trying to make up ground here, it might be tempting to ease things a little too close together. And I want to make sure we have it understood between us all that we're, I'm going to come through and roll over some tables if they're out there. So it's just the way it goes, you know? I would thank you, Mark, for looking into that for me if you could, and just make sure that we can craft something that works for all of us.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Carley?
So, Mark, I wanted to ask, I mean, you talked about downtown as being the focus, retail and restaurants. But again, would you include bicycle safety in that?
Absolutely. And in any areas where we are contemplating changes, that's going to be a primary piece, both pedestrian and bicycle safety. And in areas where we can do additional things, even outside the areas where our primary scope is, that are within our budget and that we can do quickly and feasibly, we will add those things as well. What I was trying to do is give a sense of initial focus, not to the exclusion of all other things. But I would much rather you have a clear idea of our capacity. The kinds of changes we're talking about are stunningly dramatic. I mean, codes and requirements that we've spent years developing and refining, we're going to sort of try and rewrite in weeks. So that's, and we will get that done. But that will take a significant part of your staff resources to be able to be completely ready when the health orders come online. And some of these other items have a little bit longer lead time. Again, you've raised these issues before. Our city engineer, Sherry Sheets, so in a prior presentation, was noting the kinds of things that we would begin to immediately implement. And that had to do with, in cases where adding, whether it was room or ability to either add a bike lane or to add essentially paint on the pavement, noting where you have mixed lanes. So those things you've previously given us direction on. And anytime we have the opportunity, we will include that as a part of our activities that we're doing in this area.
All right. Thanks very much.
Councilmember Monroe? You had your hand raised a bit.
I had my hand raised and then I decided to unraise it, so.
Okay, very good. Okay, Vice Mayor Warner?
Yeah, I just wanted to second that we saw in the presentation that there's the health safety from the virus. But the other thing that's absolutely important is just the general safety. I mean, that was pointed out in the presentation. And then whatever we do, we do that in mind. And I certainly agree with the vice leaders and Councilmember Cooper that we've got to make this accessible and workable. But the focus still in my mind is we get it going from the merchant's point of view and we make it safe. And to the extent possible, we further these other goals. And so, for instance, I think it's Third Street, where we were talking about the eventual east-west bike lane through downtown. I mean, so I don't know what we can do there, but that was a question of can we take out some of the parking? And then we were dependent on the L Street garage. So we now know, however, that some of our other projects, the timeline is going to be delayed. We know that we're going to be in this situation for an extended period of time. So I completely agree with rethink what we can do in a reasonable period of time for the bicycle and the other transportation through there. But then let's get a schedule together of what we can do when and make sure we implement it. And that we don't get, we come up with a schedule and we get it done. And that's where I'm coming from.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, with that, there being, first question to ask, city manager, do you have sufficient direction to move ahead and to work with the downtown merchants and to ensure that we've got sufficient safety protocols in place for both ADA, cyclists, pedestrians, et cetera?
I believe we do, Your Honor.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you very much. Any further comments, questions from the council? Very good. Thank you. We're now move on to matters initiated. Anybody have any matters? Councilmember Cooper, do you have any matters for council reports? Nope, doesn't look like it.
I just was trying to unmute the wrong button. Yeah, I had a, as for council reports, we have the LAFTA's Finance and Administration Committee met, as well as a full LAFTA board. And the highlights of which were rolling out the budget, which is that time of year. And startlingly enough, finding out that the buses are running about 90% fewer, you know, 90% fewer than unusual. I guess startling when you hear it that way, not startling considering there's no schools. The malls are shut down. There's nobody really going anywhere, so. But I was pleased to see that the budget entered was still balanced and, you know, crossing our fingers that we can maintain things at least until things pick up again. I will count on the county tomorrow to come through and help us expand a little bit. And no matters.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you. Let's see, moving on to Councilmember Monroe?
All right, so I just wanted to say a quick word about the thing that I decided not to say, which is I am so dying to see shuttle buses downtown. And I just kept wanting to say something about it. I just sort of picking up on the empty buses. And in this environment, I just can't understand, I recognize that seems like another time, another place. Very quiet a couple of weeks, but I do have one reminder to everybody. If you have not filled out your census yet, fill out your census. I'll say that again. Fill out your census. A third time, fill out your census. And then I have one matters initiated, and that is the microloan issue. I would be interested in seeing if there's my, Dublin just initiated this. I was jealous. And I'm wondering if it's something we can look at doing, that, this loan program that was suggested during public comment. But I'm wondering if we could look into doing that and if there might be agreement to make that happen.
Certainly. See if staff can bring back some information on that.
Do we have nods?
So if the clerk could pull, we could certainly bring some information back on that. I think what we'd like to explore is perhaps a public-private partnership where we have seen some other cities that have facilitated loaning by essentially banks, but sometimes helped with interest or other things during a very limited period of time. That allows the banks to do what they're good at, which is underwriting and similar things, and allows us to provide a modest amount of help. Obviously, one of our major issues on this front is having a $10 million hole in our own collective budgets here. We have to be extraordinarily careful of the public's resources to make sure that we have the resources to do what they depend on us to do. But where we can facilitate an action in the private marketplace, I think that makes great sense for us to explore. I know Adam Vandewater, your Director of Innovation and Economic Development, has been having preliminary conversations on some sort of public-private partnership. So we'll do some more exploration, bring some information back to you. Are there essentially, if that meets the needs of Councilmember Monroe, is that something that the council would be interested in? Could the city clerk do a quick roll call for me?
It needs my needs.
Vice Mayor Warner?
I think that the key word for me is explore. And what we're really talking about is when you use the term something like microloans, you're talking about spreading a little bit of money to many people. That's what that concept is. And the counter approach, of course, is trying to facilitate something downtown where we're investing in infrastructure a significant amount of money, where we're focusing a larger amount of money on a particular set of projects. So I would just request that when you come back with your options, that you put it in context with the alternatives for that money and then also with respect to our own budget situation. So with that, I agree.
And I appreciate the public-private, making sure that that was explicit.
Okay, so I agree. So that's three nods.
Well, here's four.
Okay, so we got four nods. I imagine Councilmember Carley is pondering.
No, I was just waiting for you to call on me. I'm not interested in the, I'm not interested in the city being a bank and loaning money. I think that's what Mark said. He didn't want to do that either. So I agree with what Mark said. I do, I do puzzle about microloans because the amount of money at least discussed in that comment from that one resident didn't seem to me to be very much money at all that would really help somebody. Business of, I mean, his suggestion was a business of two to 10 employees and they'd get a microloan of a thousand to a few thousand dollars, which doesn't seem to amount to very much. I think Mark's approach is a lot better, and I would agree with what he had to say.
I also agree with what Vice Mayor Warner suggested, that yes, we are investing significant resources into the downtown to bring people into the downtown to help businesses as well. So slightly different way of looking at it, but certainly with the same result. Okay, anything else? Councilmember Monroe? Okay, Councilmember Carley?
Nothing for me. Thanks.
Okay, Vice Mayor Warner?
Oh, I attended, like, Councilmember Cooper, the Wheels Board Meeting. And the one thing I would add from that is that the last time I reported on the Projects and Services Committee where we noted that the ridership had declined, but the calls to police for assistance had gone up dramatically. And that was a transitory problem. And the last time I checked into it, that's not an issue at the moment. So I wanted to report that out. I attended the Councilmember Monroe's behalf, the Livermore Cultural Arts Council meeting. They elected a new slate of officers for the coming year. That was uneventful. The key, though, is that, as you can all well imagine, the arts, performing arts organizations especially, are devastated by what's happened. And they're doing whatever they can to be creative and coming out of this. But I think, you know, the community has to be cognizant of it, and to the extent we can help, we should. And then I think that's it. I've got no other matters initiated.
Well, to Vice Mayor Warner's point, I've noticed that there are several Livermore Valley operas that have been broadcast. There have been science There have been, uh, science programs through LV PAC that are presented. So a lot of really good, uh, entertainment opportunities are still available on, uh, just by going to, uh, seeing the, uh, what's out there. It's a great opportunity to get caught up just as you're sheltering in place to see some of the fantastic talent at the Livermore Opera or the Ray Doro Speaker Series.
What I, uh, mentioned is also I had attended, as Adam Van De Water mentioned, the, uh, some of the Zoom meetings with the merchants and that was very, uh, encouraging to know their enthusiasm for being creative here to get something, uh, done. By going back to the arts, um, I believe Stockman's Park is going to be coming up this summer. And it's an opportunity for not only the merchants to maybe make use of it, but also the performing arts, uh, groups to think about inappropriate, safe, social distancing to make use of that as well.
Well, because Stockman Park's a pretty, pretty good sized expanse of, uh, of open space. So that's, uh, it's a good idea. All right, moving on. That's so, uh, last Friday I was at the, I was at a Zoom meeting of the San Joaquin Regional Rail Commission. We had an upgrade, update on the positive train controls and also, uh, conversation on the performance review procedures for our executive director. Today was the, uh, Planning Policy and Ledge Committee for the Almody County Transportation Commission. Uh, most notable thing there was the, uh, committee voted to approve the staff recommendation to move $400 million of measure BB funding to the, uh, Valley Link. And this is, uh, going to be a tremendous game changer. Uh, this will eventually go to the, uh, the full commission later on this month. Uh, at that point, if it goes, if it's passed, there's a 45 day public comment period. And then it comes back to the commission and the commission will eventually vote, uh, probably September of this year to, uh, determine whether or not that $400 million of funding, which was originally allocated to bring Bart to Livermore, since Bart voted in, uh, May of 2018 to not, uh, move ahead with that, uh, that option. Moving ahead with, uh, AB 758, the creation of the 15 member JPA to take those $400 million and use that to leverage additional funding to ultimately have a, uh, a regional rail that'll bring folks from, from the San Joaquin Valley through Livermore and ultimately to the Bart Station to connect, uh, Ace Train and in Bart. So, uh, stay tuned on that one. It's going to be a real game changer for, uh, for the region. And, uh, lastly, there was, uh, uh, recently was reported that Sites Reservoir has, uh, uh, long been anticipated as, uh, uh, one of the saving for the, the water industry or water, uh, infrastructure that we have. Uh, we know that Gavin Newsom, our governor, has, uh, suggested building 300 or excuse me, three and a half million new housing units. Uh, and one of the big, uh, limitations in the infrastructure is water. Well, Sites Reservoir has been proposed for a number of years. There was a state, uh, ballot initiative which provided about $800 million to Sites Reservoir. Uh, it was recently reported that the funding for, or the, uh, the project is going to be reduced in scale by $2 billion from $5 billion to $3 billion. And the annual average yield has been reduced from a half a million, uh, acre feet, uh, per year to about a quarter of a million acre feet, which is roughly the capacity of the zone seven, uh, groundwater base. So, uh, as we continue to move ahead with, uh, with water, uh, infrastructure and as the state is looking at, adding new housing units, we need to be cognizant, uh, that one of the big limitations on that will continue to be water. So with that, uh, stay tuned on that. With that, uh, we will adjourn to a special city council meeting, uh, on May 18th. That'll also be, uh, using Zoom and YouTube. That will be a special meeting at 5:00 PM. And then we also have the next regular meeting of the Livermore City Councils will be June 8th. Uh, so with that, uh, no further business, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.